Good morning. Call to order, the January 29, 2022 special meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Do we have any guests for invocation? Any member of council like to give invocation this morning? Councilman O'Neill, thank you.
Lord, thank you for this ability to gather. We ask that you watch over us as we deliberate. We ask that you grant us the wisdom and guidance that only comes from you. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our great city. We ask that you watch over and bless those within our community. We ask that you watch over our first responders as they continue to serve during tumultuous times. We ask that you give us the tranquility and peace that again can only come from you in these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Councilwoman Brenner, would you leave us in the pledge?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for joining us this morning. We now will have public comments on non-agenda items. Please go forward.
And just to emphasize, it's going to be a strict three minutes to speak on non-agenda items.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. At this meeting, staff is apparently going to ask you to assign priorities to certain things that will cost money in the coming fiscal year. I cannot anticipate what those things will be, but I might remind you that last fall, a majority of you voted to spend a reasonably large amount of money placing an elect our mayor charter proposal on the June ballot. I would like to point out that there is still plenty of time this year at much less expense to put on the November ballot, a charter amendment to go by district voting. And you could include in that a proposal to replace our traditional but manifestly defective single-run winner-take-all elections with a commitment to go to instant runoff ranked choice voting. In fact, while the latter could be made and probably should be made a charter requirement, I believe you have the power to do that today. Speaking of beliefs and traditions of American citizenship, in previewing this meeting in his online newspaper yesterday, Mr. Tom Johnson observed that it would of course start with the traditional items of the pledge of allegiance and a prayer, as indeed it did. I would like to point out that pledges and prayers are not a longstanding tradition in Newport Beach. The pledge to a belief that our government exists under some kind of God has been part of this planning session only since 2017, and the practice of opening these planning sessions with a prayer has been a tradition only since last year. I would also like to point out that people's religious beliefs are manifestly not within the jurisdiction of the city council, and including such group affirmations in public meetings can make the attendees who may not wish to participate in them feel awkward and unwelcome. I hope that you do not want to make anyone feel awkward or unwelcome at your meetings, and I would suggest that these are so-called traditions that should be eliminated. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for having me. I'm here to propose a conversation for the capital improvement and the infrastructure conversation for later today on extending the oceanfront bike path from 36th Street down to Orange Street. It's a section that's been kind of terminated at 36th, and it puts all the pedestrian traffic out on the Seashore Drive where all the homes along Seashore have to back in and out of their garages with a bike lane right up against their garage doors. I have a packet with some photographs. If you'd like to see them, you can pass them around amongst yourselves.
And this is going to be on the agenda later, so you'll have an opportunity to stick to it then.
Is it?
Yes, I'll go ahead and take the photographs if you want. Thank you.
We'll have those photographs when it comes up on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the update on the financial status from our city manager.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and City Council. It's good to see everybody here on a Saturday morning. I actually consider this one of my favorite events of the year, and for me, it's because we have such a strong financial planning process here and really consideration. And I think it really shows up whether it's held us well through tough times, but also in good times too, to make sure that we are planning and utilizing our resources appropriately. And as you'll see, as we'll have Scott begin to kick off on our financial status right now, which is looking very positive coming out of this pandemic period of time, that we really have an opportunity to take a look at where there's areas that we can continue to build and have a strong foundation, and a particular focus area, as you'll see later, will be on our capital improvement side, which I think just serves this whole community and our assets and all that makes it, you know, into the future. So we'll be in a good place there through all this. So without further ado, I'll have Scott kickoff on the financial side first. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of council. Scott Catlett, your finance director. I'm going to start off with a financial overview and give you an update on the current fiscal year, and then we'll start talking about next year and the numbers we're seeing for the budget that we're going to start developing here in the next few months. So this slide is an update of the first quarter budget information that you saw a few months ago. And as you'll see, back at the first quarter, we were looking at about $238 million of general fund revenue. That number, based on our current projection, is now up to almost $250 million. And that's about a $15 million variance from the budget that was adopted by the council last June. You'll see in the list there at the bottom where that's coming from, and so we've been cautious about assuming that these numbers are going to come to fruition, but now that the year is six months behind us, we can really see that these trends are stabilized and that they seem to be continuing through the year. And you'll see that property tax is a fairly minor adjustment, which we would expect because that's stable and we get good numbers on that early in the year. But sales tax has been a nice surprise in that that's really started to rebound quite a bit, and we'll go into more detail on that in a little while when I talk about the long-term trend in next year's numbers. TOT, though, is really the bright spot here, and I have a slide a little farther along where I'll talk about that in some more detail as well, but we're looking at a $6.5 million variance on the adopted budget for TOT. Then the last bit is property transfer tax, which is something we always budget conservatively, but that's an indication that, as was the case last year, home sales are continuing to be strong in the city, and so we're seeing revenues come in from that as well. So on this slide, I just wanted to give you a trend so you can sort of see what's happened throughout COVID for each of these, and remind the council that these three make up 75% of our revenue. So really, what happens with these three is what drives our financial decision-making. We have lots of other revenues, but they're small in comparison. Property tax has been growing throughout the pandemic, as we would expect. Sales tax did take a minor dip, but it hit a record last year, and you'll see that that's now heading back onto the pre-COVID trend out into the future. And then TOT, while on the hotel side, we're not quite back to the pre-pandemic levels. On the residential TOT or the short-term lodging, we're seeing a record year this year from those revenues, and so that is actually propelled as to what we think at the end of the year will be a record year for TOT. We were expecting that it would take until the end of next fiscal year to get back to that record level, and so that's happening a year sooner than we had expected when we looked at this about six or eight months ago. On the expenditure side, the finance committee is going to look at our expenditure budget coming up at their meeting in a few weeks, and we'll have some updates for them on how we're seeing the year. But so far, departments are spending as we would expect, and although we have some mid-year appropriations for labor contracts and a fairly sizable one for the engineering on the large assessment district for undergrounding on Balboa Island, we're expecting that this revenue growth that's quite strong is going to fully offset those mid-year appropriations, and so that should produce a budget surplus for this year. Now, the size of that budget surplus obviously is dependent upon a lot of factors. We still have six months left to go in our revenue timeline for the current fiscal year. And so we're cautious in especially looking at the effects of Omicron on TOT revenues. We don't yet have returns for December, and so we'll be looking at those closely, but based on the information that we're hearing, we don't expect for that to be a significant issue relative to the overall TOT revenues for the full 12-month period. We do expect expenditure savings may be a little bit smaller than in prior years, and the same thing that we told you last year, but that's really primarily because we still have that vacancy factor in the budget. You may recall that during the pandemic, we included an assumption of salary savings in the budget, so this is the second year that we've done that, and we would expect in the budget that we'll be proposing to you for next year that that would be removed from the budget, and we would go back to a full salary budget for next year. So at the end of the day, we do expect that there would be a fairly healthy budget surplus for this year, and as we come to you with that second quarter budget update in a few weeks, and then the third quarter later, we'll be able to get down to a better understanding of what that number might be. With that, the main focus of my presentation today is looking out into next year, and I'm pleased to say that that is as positive as was the case of what I just reported to you about the current year. We are, in the prior year, we achieved $236 million of revenue, and I just mentioned we'll be at about 250 this year, we think. Next year, right now, is looking at about $265 million of revenue. So that includes about $16 million of growth, and you'll see the biggest there is property tax. And on the next couple of slides, I'll go into details on what exactly is driving that. And then we also have healthy growth coming on sales tax, and then with TOT now kind of getting back to where it was pre-COVID, that growth is going to slow down and trend more with the long-term growth line of what that does in a typical year. And then the balance of the growth is the typical things you would see with fees and other things in the budget. So looking at property tax, again, this is 50% of our general fund revenue. You'll see that last year, or sorry, the current year is actually the smallest growth factor that you'll see on that chart going back to 1617. But the bright spot is that next year is going to be the largest growth factor that we've seen since back in 201819. And one of the things that's driving that is that CPI factor. So under Proposition 13, the state sets the growth factor we can add to properties that have a capped assessment. And last year, that number was down around 1%, but now it's at the maximum for the new year at 2%. In addition to that, that strong sales activity that I mentioned that was driving our growth rate for our property transfer tax, that's manifesting itself then in growing the value because those homes that were assessed at a much lower level and have turned over are now getting reassessed at a much higher value. So we're expecting 6.5% growth for next year, and that's at this point just hot off the presses a couple of days ago from our consultants. So that is a good number based on the actual assessment role that was enrolled by the assessor for the upcoming year. So it will be in that 6.5% range. On the sales tax side, this is a smaller portion of our revenue, but still almost 20%, and we just barely achieved the pre-pandemic level of revenue last fiscal year. So we're now moving into record territory in terms of revenue. But the dynamics of that revenue and where it's coming from have changed throughout the pandemic, more of it coming from the county pool, from online sales, less from brick and mortar. But what we're seeing now is that that brick and mortar is returning, and so you'll see there in some of my bullets, in this recent quarter, notably as a whole, all of our brick and mortar establishments in total are now generating more sales tax than they did at the height of the pre-pandemic point. So they're now in record territory for revenue generation. Same thing is true in the restaurant and hotels category, so that's all types of restaurants and the taxable sales from hotels. That now, in the most recent quarter, is in record territory as well. And then we were initially concerned this year about auto sales, but what's ended up happening, you may have heard there's been some supply issues with automobiles, but what's happened in terms of our sales tax revenue is that because prices have gone up, those price increases have more than offset the decline in the number of sales, and so we're seeing record sales in automobile sales as well. So really, not any bad news in sales tax at the moment. Everything is now tracking in a pre-pandemic trajectory, and we're on a path back to that line that we were seeing back in 201819. So probably the most significant change from the information that I reported to you back in June when we were adopting the budget is our hotel tax revenue. And you'll see here just an extraordinary amount of growth that's occurring in the current year, where really the visitors are coming back to town, people are spending money again, and that's not just with the hotels, but as I mentioned, we're seeing a record level of revenue coming in from our short-term rentals. And so that, we project, will get us up to a $26 million number for the current year and then to $28 million next year, which would be, again, record revenues for the city. We're very cautious in looking at these projections, and so there is still potentially some room for upward movement in these numbers, but given Omicron is coming, you know, or has been happening, and the effects of that are coming in terms of our revenue numbers, we want to wait and see what that looks like and whether that had an effect kind of middle of year. But by next year, you know, one assumes that that will be behind us, and so that number for next year, it looks pretty solid. Another important thing I wanted to mention is that we obviously have the very significant renovation going on at the Marriott, which will be opening here in a few months, and we have not presumed any effect from that. So to the extent that they have higher room rates, and we would expect significantly higher occupancy than right now where they're closed, that would have a positive effect beyond what you see here. We also have not assumed any revenue from the Fashion Island Hotel, and I know there's an announcement coming soon about that property, and there'll probably be a renovation that has to occur, but once that does reopen, that would be additional revenue outside of this projection. So depending on the timing of the revenues from those two properties, these numbers may move up a good bit based on those rooms. So with that, do you want to say something? Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to see if there are any questions on the revenue side or comments before we move into the operations.
So looking at now the operating budget for the upcoming year, we have sort of three focus areas here that we'd like to talk about. And before I do that, I just wanted to highlight the process, which begins just a few months ago with our early planning. We're now in the early stages. This is the first meeting before the council, and that'll conclude with the budget adoption in June. You can see here a listing, as Grace mentioned earlier, we have a very robust financial planning process here in the city, and the finance committee is an integral part of that. So we will be meeting with the finance committee multiple times over the next few months, as well as with the council, and getting feedback on our revenue assumptions, on our thoughts about what should be in the budget for the upcoming year, and then that'll culminate with the joint meeting with the finance committee and the council in May, followed up with the adoption in June. Looking at the operating budget pressures that we're going to talk about this evening, or this afternoon, I'm sorry, I'm going to speak about the CalPERS item first, and then I'm going to talk about the infrastructure issue, and then I'll turn it over to the city manager and some of the department heads to talk about the service needs. So a few months ago in November, I provided an update to the full finance committee about our pension funding situation, which has been very positive as a result of the sizable investment return that CalPERS saw last fiscal year. And so we wanted to give the full council an overview of what those numbers look like. If you look back to 2019, the finance committee endorsed staff's recommendation at that time to make early contributions to respond to an expected future decrease in the discount rate, or the rate of return that CalPERS assumes. And so under that policy direction, we have built $35 million into the city's baseline budget, and then each year with year-end surplus, we've been allocating an additional $5 million to our pension accelerated payment strategy. The council again endorsed that strategy in the 2021 budget, and so we are currently continuing to do that at the present time, with 2122. So looking forward to the numbers that we just talked with the finance committee about in November, the CalPERS valuations come to us a year in arrears, and so we don't have a valuation yet that includes that 21% return. But we're fortunate that CalPERS has expanded over recent years their tools that they provide to us to look at what those numbers look like and roll them forward. So the table that you see here, you'll see in the first three years, not a lot of change in that unfunded liability or the funded percentage, and that has to do really with two things. One is that there were two years in a row where CalPERS did not achieve their target investment return, that they were under that. The second is that they've been decreasing their discount rate from 7.5% to 7%, and the council strategy is actually presuming that it's going to go below 7 and to something lower. And that actually did happen just this past July with a reduction to 6.8%. But even with that decline to 6.8%, because of that 21% return, you'll see in the fourth column that we've had a significant decline in our projected liability for the June 30th of last year, and that increases our funded percentage now to almost 80% across our two pension plans. So that's a really wonderful thing to see, given that we've had a few years without a lot of movement, but you know, to be cautious and give the other side of the coin, depending on investment returns in the next several years, that could be erased by a couple of bad years. But where we stand right now, we're in extraordinarily good position, and as you'll see on the next slide, on track to pay down that liability now by 2030. So what I wanted to illustrate with this chart is to show you sort of the history here. So if you look back to the blue line, we were projecting paying down the liability in 2034 when our current strategy was approved by the council. And then because of those lower investment returns, that year slipped until 2036 when I gave you this presentation last year. But because of that 21% return now, we're looking at 2030. So clearly, that's positive movement, but the other thing that this chart illustrates is that, you know, the rise and fall of the investment markets can make that number swing around quite a bit. But we're on track to get to 2030, and staff is looking towards that as a goal. So we would be recommending to continue with that strategy in the upcoming budget year, and that would be programming $35 million into the baseline budget that the council will approve, and then intending to allocate an additional $5 million next July after the year is closed. Yes?
Yes, Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, I just want to comment on this. This is fantastic. So it's a good overall return, certainly in the market for the 21%, but for the city of Newport Beach, to have that unfunded liability reduced by $100 million, that's amazing, and to be focused on that target pay down to 2030. So here we are in 2022, 2022-2023 budget as you're working on. That means that in seven years, we would take that number down to zero, that unfunded liability number?
Well, obviously, there could be additional losses.
Of course, caveats all over the place and qualifications all over the place, but that is fantastic because that is a number that hasn't been seen in Newport Beach since like 2005. And if that happens with this good management plan going forward and notwithstanding the external factors, but that's, I mean, we've been so aggressive in paying down just for public edification, just like prepaying your mortgage and paying more, paying more, paying more. And a lot of cities cannot do that. When the discount rate is reduced, many cities were, in Orange County, were disappointed because that means their annual payment is greater, whereas we are in the city of Newport Beach, because of the excellent inputs, we are able to pay out more. And it's really astute financial management by our finance committee, by our city manager, and by our finance director to get to this position. So it's just really remarkable, and we'll need, want to make sure that continues to happen, and working with CalPERS in terms of just their support on their investment strategy, I mean, that's always been an issue. So I commend the city, and the public should know that we are in strong financial shape. So thank you.
And I just have to shamelessly say, when we were first elected, Diane Duffy and I, we took a lot of criticism for this approach, and we were told, "Don't do this, you know, just keep spending." And it's great to see that the arc is now coming down, and we're, you know, I'm proud that we were part of that effort, and it's paying off in dividends. I look forward to it, you know, continuing with the subsequent council. I'm sure they will continue it. Thank you.
So looking at the plan that the council approved, again, $35 million would be in next year's baseline budget, and then we would expect a $5 million contribution from year-end surplus, as the council has done in recent years. That being said, based on the strong revenue growth that we were just talking about, we will be evaluating the budget enhancement requests and service needs, and then seeing if there is the ability to actually program that $5 million into the baseline budget for the upcoming year. And if indeed that is able to be done, then council policy F5 would still require at the end of the year the use of half of the surplus for liabilities, which could include our pension liability. So there may be an opportunity potentially in the year ahead to pay more than $40 million. Not at this point ready to commit to that, based on all the different moving parts in the budget, but things do look as though that could be a possibility if the council would like to look at that.
Oh, and one more thing, just so the public understands, $40 million is what we're paying to pay down the unfunded. We have the current pension obligation that the city, all cities, are required to pay to pay the current, and that number is about 50-some, 50 million?
I don't have it in front of me, but that's something in that range.
So just to be clear, we're paying almost $100 million annually for our annual payment to CalPERS and then the unfunded portion. Am I close?
I think that sounds a little large, but I don't have the number in front of me, so I don't want to commit to a number that I'm not sure about.
Sure, but it's at least about $80 million annually, the combination. So when we're talking about these payments, and this is all fantastic to pay this down, this is just paying the unfunded liability of the city. And on top of our annual payment, ongoing payments, just to pay our annual dues to CalPERS is about, I always thought it was in the $50 million range, but anyway, to be confirmed, but it's a lot of money, and we are able to pay it, and that is the most important point. So thank you.
The second item that we wanted to focus on is infrastructure maintenance and replacement. As we do anticipate having some funds next year to allocate to new items in the budget, this is an area that we really thought was important to focus on, and I think the finance committee concurred with that. And so we'll be bringing forward some items to finance committee in February to look in more detail at the items I'm going to talk about now. So we have two financial plans in place, one for facilities and one for the harbor and beaches infrastructure, that look at the long-term needs in these areas and then seek to cash fund those on an annual basis from deposits from the general fund, and in the cases, the case of harbor and beaches, there's also a contribution from Thailand's revenues. The city has an ongoing program as well for facility maintenance, and so that's called the FMMP, and that is designed to focus on the shorter-term needs for replacing components within these facilities as well. And then lastly, we have various internal service funds that are designed to look at fully funding our replacements for our vehicles, for our equipment, and fire engines, police vehicles, all those sorts of things. You can see here in the table on the screen what the annual contributions have been to those three programs over the last five years, and this is a sizable commitment from the general fund, and this is similar to our pension strategy, something that a lot of cities are not able to do, and so something the city should be proud of, that we're setting aside these resources every year. And in the most recent year, $14.5 million is the number that was allocated. First, I wanted to focus on the $8.5 million for the facilities financing plan, and under council policy, that number is at $8.5 million, and then when the general fund grows to a size that 3% of our revenues exceed that number, it would grow based on the growth of that 3% factor. So that's about five years out in the future, we think will be at that number, and then the 8.5 would sort of index off of 3% of general fund revenues. It's important to realize, though, that one of the things that that FFP fund does is it pays the debt service on the civic center and now on the debt that we issued recently for the fire station. And so in the upcoming year, because we're starting to pay principal on that fire station, the debt service is actually going to be $8.7 million, so it'll be slightly larger than that $8.5 million transfer. So staff is going to be recommending in the upcoming budget that we raise that transfer at least to $8.7 million so that we're covering that debt service and not taking funds out of the fund balance in the FFP for that. In addition to that, we also want to-
One second, Scott, sorry.
Go ahead.
Councilman O'Neill.
Yeah, so just for council, this is going to be coming back to us, just FYI. So the finance committee, I know it'll say this in a later slide, but the finance committee is going to be reviewing this. Just a quick, kind of a wonky note for you, that when this was created, it was originally created to determine whether the debt service on, whether the city would be able to do the civic center without crowding out other CIPs going forward in the future. So the FFP in large part is a financing tool to determine how much we have going forward and whether we'll be able to afford future CIPs, mostly the replacement. forward and whether we'll be able to afford future CIPs, mostly the replacement of existing facilities, but then when we have new facilities that we plan for, such as junior lifeguards or library lecture hall, it gets programmed in, and then we just, we have to determine whether we have a sufficient amount of money. As Scott's mentioning, right now, we're essentially contributing from the general fund the amount that is to cover the debt financing on the civic center and no more than that. So in large part, the FFP funding has been relying on future development, developer impact fees, which is not exactly something we can plan for, given the housing environment that California is, Sacramento is playing for. So this is what Scott's kind of teeing up for us, the question of, do we need to be setting aside more money into the FFP? One thing I think we'll probably certainly do is, well, first off, we'll certainly be covering the amount from the general fund to cover the debt service. But the question then is, should we be categorizing this slightly differently so that it's abundantly clear in our budget that this money is actually going toward debt service and not toward future funding of projects? And I think the answer is yes. And so then the question is, you know, how do we make sure that we're putting, setting aside a sufficient amount of money, given where we're, you know, what we plan for in developer impact fees? So anyway, this is, I wanted to kind of set the stage for this discussion, because it's going to happen at the finance committee, and it's going to definitely come back to us as part of the budget planning process. But since we are in a position now where we have revenues that can justify setting aside sufficient funds, it's time to invest in our future, and this is one path to do so. So I wanted to tee that up, because, like I said, it's coming back, but I wanted to highlight why and how it's going to be discussed.
Thank you, Councilman Brenner.
Bill, I just want to clarify, we can attend the finance committee meetings but not participate. Is that true?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to city. I might be an attorney, but yeah, that's right.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, are you going to be talking about the facilities financial plan at all, other than what we're seeing right here? Well, I guess my question is, what I'd like to see at some point, maybe when, as Will just said, when it comes back to the council, to see the historical balance in the facilities financial plan, because my guess is it's lower now than it's ever been, because the rate of development, thanks to a few key projects that are going through, that have been approved in the last few years, but the balance, I think it's like $25 million. I just saw the chart not too long ago, if my memory serves me correctly, when it historically has been close to $100 million. So just so the people understand, the public understands that the facilities financial plan historically, this was created maybe 15 years ago, is an excellent planning tool, that every single physical structure, public structure in the city of Newport Beach has a plan for either maintenance or replacement, there's the maintenance fund or the replacement. And what has funded every park, every community building, community center, over the last 70 parks in Newport Beach, has been development agreement funds. That is, those are funds that have been given as part of the development process and the nexus to developing in Newport Beach, and the public benefit of such development. And because development is not proceeding at the same rapid clip that it has over the last several decades, that income stream is not as, at a high level as it used to be. So anyway, going forward from a planning standpoint, it's really important that we understand in comparative terms of where that money was. We're not building that many new parks, I get that, or community centers, but there's still got new police headquarters. I mean, that's projected plus the land. I mean, we've got some big-ticket items projected in the next 10 years, and we need to figure out how we're going to pay for all those. So that's my, I'd like to see that analysis, historical trend line of the facilities financial plan. Okay, thanks.
Certainly, we can do that. So as Councilmember O'Neil mentioned, we'll be looking at the mixture of development fee revenues and general fund resources in the long term, and talking about that with the finance committee, and then the finance committee would have a recommendation on what that funding should look like in the years ahead, which could include raising that transfer beyond the $8.7 million. Looking at the second line there, the harbor and beaches capital plan, that number has moved up and down a bit over the last few years, but it's in that general $4 to $5 million range in the recent years. And the harbor commission just reviewed that plan, and based on that review, that appears to still be the right number, although we are looking at indexing it on inflation, similar to the 3% number we talked about for the FFP. And so that number would start growing in future years versus staying flat at the $4.5 million. And then lastly, the FMMP, which is that maintenance fund for the smaller projects, we've looked at that in consultation with the public works department, and we're going to be recommending for next fiscal year's budget, increasing that from $1.5 to $2.5 million on an ongoing basis from some of these new revenues that have been generated, so that we can ensure that our facilities are maintained in a top-notch condition. And again, the finance committee, we'll be looking at all three of these as part of a staff report coming to them in February. And following that review, we'll come to the council with those recommendations from the finance committee, and along with those recommendations, we're also looking at our internal service funds, those who have much more minor adjustments, but we will be making some recommendations to ensure also that our vehicle funding is adequate, so that we're replacing all of our vehicles and equipment on the appropriate timeline. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Okay. And I do think we are in a good position to be looking at these areas that I think are the most critical points to making sure that they're really part of our baseline budget, taking care of our assets, whether it's the equipment, the buildings, the general infrastructure. So I think we're in a very good position right now to assure that we have it funded in appropriate manner from ongoing basis long term. So it's really, I think, a good opportunity right now to go through that. So we're going to shift gears a little bit over to the service needs side. Now, we are just starting to develop the operating budget in this next year. The departments are providing to me what their potential requests are, if there's additional needs, and any enhancements that seem appropriate. So I'm going to bring up just a couple here, and there'll probably be some more to talk about, because we're still vetting through them right now. And the first one up, and I see, we'll have, thank you, Chief Lewis come up to discuss a bit, is additional equipment and technology for the police department. So you will be seeing a request regarding body worn cameras, and we do have tasers that had been put into the budget and need their replacement funding set in there, too. So just at a high level, the chief will cover this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nug. Mayor Muldoon, member of the city council, good morning. John Lewis, chief of police. I have with me Deputy Director Jonathan Stafford, who leads our technology efforts. And our body worn camera proposal here is really, in essence, an upgrade to our mobile video system that we've had in place. And just for perspective here, we were early adopters of this technology. In the mid to late 90s, we've had some type of mobile video recording in all of our police cars since that time. So this is not a new program. In essence, it's an upgrade to the latest iteration of body worn camera technology to upgrade the existing system that we have already in the cars. And I think that it's important to understand really what this gives us. The actual mobile video system or the dash cams, as I think they're commonly referred to, body worn cameras have really become industry standard, but both are necessary for our operations. The mobile video system that we have, particularly when it relates to pursuits and traffic accidents and things like that, also, we have technology in the cars that allows us to record the prisoner transportation area, the backseat of the police car, which, from a liability standpoint, is very important to us as well. What the body worn cameras allows us to do is, we have the limitation now where if we're inside a home or if we're inside a business, we don't have the ability to actually record in a video form that those interactions, and the body worn cameras allow us to do that. So we, the technology itself is something that has, in essence, become industry standard. It's one that we've looked at, and we've piloted, and it's strong, stable technology at this point, and really has matured. And so at this point, we feel it's important for us to take a look at and to roll out for our officers transparency piece of this, but also from a liability perspective for the city. Any questions about the-
Yeah, chief, so you think it will reduce liability?
We've seen that it has, it absolutely has, and what we found with these cameras, so over time, is that even in the area of personnel complaints, and we do get those, you know, typically, you know, when interactions where people are, some type of enforcement encounter, whether it's a citation or arrest, you know, we'll see those types of, you know, complaints that will be made against our officers. What we've found time and time again is that the, those body worn cameras provide them with an extra ability to verify that they're doing the right thing out there. So it's been something, again, we've had for many, many years in place and have seen some really good success with the program.
So can we take it out of Aaron's budget?
Yes, that's the proposal.
The city attorney will pay for this.
That's the proposal. That's why we're here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Two things. The first one is, whenever I see this happen in other cities, it's usually a discussion about the costs, and also, it's a fairly substantial policy change. So from the policies change side, sometimes I've seen cities go through where they, you know, they are at odds with their associations. I assume that since you're bringing it to us, that, you know, the associations, both the management and POA, you know, they understand it, they're going to be on board with it, they're not going to come in and fight it.
That's a good question. And so we've already, we've had a pilot program in place, and before we even rolled that out, that was something that we had met with those groups and taken input and made the needed policy adjustments. And I think that the difference between what we're proposing here and what we've seen in other jurisdictions, some in the county that have never had this technology in place, and up until recently, there's been, there's been other jurisdictions and neighboring jurisdictions that have had zero in terms of recording in their cars. And I think that that's where the adjustment is with the groups and rolling that into their operations. We haven't seen that again. We started this program back in the, you know, late 90s, and I mean, it was a VHS tape in the back and a Sony Watchmen, and I'm really not kidding about that. It was, so this has been something that has been embraced and adopted by our folks for many, many years, and many of our folks are the ones that are requesting that we propose this additional piece of equipment for them. But it's a good question, and it's one that we've already had dialogue and will continue to have dialogue with as we roll it out.
Yeah, I mean, anecdotally, I've heard a number of times where just the audio recording itself will diffuse the, diffuse a complaint against one of our officers. So that's been helpful. The other question I had, the ongoing expense of the anticipation of around $195,000, is that mostly for storage? Because, I mean, this is going to be a lot of, a lot of data. So how does, how does that work?
That's the issue. I'm going to have Mr. Stafford address that, and specifically, but the issue with body worn camera programs, what we've seen throughout the county, and any agency has put them in, it's not just the recording of it, but it's also our compliance now with our district attorney's office in terms of discovery, which is a monumental task when you're talking about this amount of data. And so we've already looked at optimizing the processes that we have now, but we're going to need to have additional staffing to manage this, frankly, going forward. With everything that we've done, we've even moved a full-time person in place to manage our existing system, where we're still months behind in terms of managing the existing workload that we have. So in order for us to manage what we think is what we estimate to probably be a tenfold increase in terms of the work volume there, where that's where we're looking for that additional, again, civilian employee to manage. But Mr. Stafford, if you want to touch on that briefly?
So I'm sorry, I said 200, I should have said 400, because I wasn't including the CSO.
Yeah, sir, the, good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. Mr. O'Neil, the proposal we have on the table does include, we do have a hard code in hand, spent some time refining it. It does include a five-year deal, but it's amortized over the five years. It does include unlimited storage. If we were to do this today with our existing vendor, it does include all storage for all the devices, as well as transferring our legacy video from the current system that we have. So that is included. There will be no balloon payments with the five-year deal.
Got it. Okay. And also, it's 300, not 400. Sorry, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, there's some initial cost. Could I add on the additional staff piece, just very quickly, is we are evaluating, as we look organizationally on positions, and we think there might be an area from a different department where, if we're doing some adjustments, we'll be able to reallocate. So we are looking at that.
By iron.
Not the city attorney's office.
You see a couple of our officers responding to a disturbance after this meeting, it'll probably be my city attorney. We'll work through it, we'll work through it.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thanks.
I just want to put some color on that story. When a prosecutor gets a police report, doesn't matter if it's a DUI, assaulting an officer, some stops, they request all the video. And so that's got to be unbelievable amount of work if every officer interaction is going to be filmed now.
It really is, and that's, and it's not just the video piece in the cars, which is, which is a monumental task, it really is where we're at. We also have our jail footage that is, so every time that we have an arrest, we have to make that request as well. And so we have, which, that, we have a jail system in place right now that records all the audio and video down there as well, but this is a piece of the technology that needs an upgrade as well. It takes time in producing what we have from the actual arrest footage in the field, and then from when this individual hits our jail and walks all the way through, is something that's requested as well. So that's another piece of it that adds on it, just in addition to what the, what the field recordings are. But that's, that's the piece, is significant, for sure.
Yeah. Councilman Brenner.
John, what percentage of police departments now have this technology?
In Orange County, it's, I would, I mean, off the top of my head, I'd say about 75% and probably more than that. But there's varying degrees of technology that's in the field. Some departments have gone to, you know, specifically where it's just a body camera and not what's in the cars. You know, we, we think that it's better to have both. There's, one of the major purchases that has just gone on is the Orange County Sheriff's Department has just rolled it out. So there's been, but these are, these are agencies now that are, that are about, timing-wise, the same as us, rolling into this program, where we were, we weren't in a position where some of the other ones were, that had to go to this really early on because they didn't have anything at all. So I'd say it's probably three quarters of the agencies in the county, and could be more. Mr. Stafford, probably a little bit more than that.
I would think it would give the officers some degree of confidence that they won't be wrongly accused of something.
Well, it does, and clearly, I'm biased, you know, in terms of what goes on in the field with our officers, and what I, what we see consistently in time and time again, and this is going all the way back from my time as internal affairs investigator, is when we pull that, when we pull that video, it verifies our officer's story in terms of what had happened during that encounter. And so that, it helps us with complaints, but it also, a lot of times, too, we will, we'll sit down with people and say, hey, look, this is exactly what happened here. And once they understand, you know, what the overall capture of what had happened and the crisp documentation of the actual incident itself, so it does, it provides our officers a level of protection, certainly.
I would think it would give us some degree of insurance that we can talk to our citizens when they're saying our police department is not mean enough, that we can tell them that our police department is following all the protocols because there's evidence of that. That would be helpful.
It's going to be on TikTok anyways. We might as well have our own version of these videos.
Well, everybody's got a recording device now, right? I mean, every time we arrest somebody, there's our recording devices plus 15 others.
Yes.
Well, that's a very good point, because usually somebody else is, and I don't know if it's in Newport Beach, but we see, we see these things on the news all the time where someone else is recording. So to have our verifiable, our own data, video data, I think, just as Ms. Brenner said, I mean, it protects us. And I know just since the time we've been sitting on the council, the city has spent a lot of money defending itself on accusations that maybe later subsequently we prevailed in the court process, but having that video camera on body, video camera may have prevented a lot of time and money in how we defended these cases before us. So I am fully supportive of this when this comes forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
And then the next piece here is our tasers, and this is, this is a force device, in essence, that we've used for many, many years. This system has been in place, and again, it's another upgrade. We're out of a warranty with these, with these devices. And really, what's important about this replacement here is, again, technology continues to help us when it comes with these different force options here, and what'll allow us with this, with this new program here is to replace our existing ones, which are out of warranty, have served us well over the, over the five years that we've had them in place. This new technology allows us to apply this, these taser deployments with more distance and with greater accuracy, which is something that is a significant improvement over time.
And that helps deter escalated interactions?
There really is, and that's, a lot of it, too, with the, with the tasers, is sometimes just the deployment of the taser, when somebody thinks that it's going to be used, is enough for a deterrent when we have one of these force encounters. So it's another option for our officers. We've seen it, again, we've seen this technology grow over time, and there have been some limitations to it. We feel like this, this program that we have now and this actual equipment is the best we've seen in many, many years, and we're, this is, again, something we've seen that's been effective in the past, and, again, the technology on this has matured, it's stable, and it provides us with another important force option for our officers.
Great. Thank you. And Councilman-
I just wanted to ask a general question. We had that case somewhere in the country where an officer said she thought she grabbed her taser and she grabbed her gun. I just wanted to ask a general question. We had that case somewhere in the country where an officer said she thought she grabbed her taser and she grabbed her gun. Can you tell us what the safeguards are for that?
So that's a, that's a training piece. And so I'll, I'll tell you what, how I, how I handle this. We, we, we train to deploy a taser with an offhand rather than, uh, so I'm, I'm left-handed and please don't judge me. But I, um, the, uh, taser's deployed with, um, with my offhand, with, um, what we call a weak hand or, um, so that's, uh, those, those are some of the training things that we have built in place. We also have, um, if you notice the tasers are yellow, there's, um, all these things in place, right? Because we want to distinguish those from the actual firearm. And, and that is the absolute nightmare situation that we, um, that we never, ever want to have happen. But there's significant training that goes into all of this and, and the, and the way it's deployed. So it's, um, so we don't have those types of situations. But yeah, that was a tragic, um, absolute nightmare situation.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Okay. Um, I'd like to switch over now into discussing another very important, high priority for the council, for, for us as staff certainly, is our, um, response for homelessness. And certainly we've, uh, we continue to do a lot of work in this area. We know it's a complex problem. We know we still want to, um, do more, um, through all of that. And it, I do believe it reflects in, um, both the priority of the city council and the staff, um, and as well as you see in the budget resources that we have here. So I'm going to have, uh, Assistant City Manager Tara Finnegan, um, who also has, uh, Natalie Basmatian, our homeless services coordinator here, to talk a little bit through the programs that we provide and the amount of budget we do have, um, and currently and being planned.
Thank you, Grace. Mayor and council, I will give a brief summary of the services that we're currently providing before we get into the numbers. There is also a detailed handout in the back of the room. Um, it's also before you. And we will put that handout online today under the city's homeless services section of the website under documents and resources. For those watching from home, they'll be able to access it later today. Just very quickly, we look at our homeless outreach in three ways. The services we provide internally with our internal resources, uh, those we then look to contractors for, and then those we need coordination from our partners at the county, city and state level. Internally, we provide, uh, first of all, our, our own council has a homeless ad hoc comprised of council members Avery Brenner and O'Neal. And they meet regularly with experts in our community that specialize in social services, affordable housing, mental health services, uh, to kind of advise our program. Then we also have two full-time dedicated employees to our, to our homeless outreach program. Natalie, as, as you know well, and Officer Cynthia Carter. They are feet on the street. They're out in the field every day, working with our homeless population. They are augmented by staff from our police department, public works, city manager's office, fire, recreation and senior services. So we really look at this as a holistic approach. They lead our efforts. They're supported by us as needed. Moving forward, we also have our rapid response team. And there's an area of the city that we feel needs a full look by all these departments together. Officer Carter and Natalie will arrange a day where we all go out together. And we will look, we'll have public works there looking at how we can clean up the site. We'll have recreation and senior services there, helping people get connected with our oasis services. Fire and EMS might go out and help us connect them with medical needs. So we do, we really do try to also target areas and really help people out in the field. We have our good giving campaign, which as you know, that, there are signs around the city and we have a handout. We have a very generous community and we have asked folks to target those donations toward the organizations, the nonprofits that help us to meet the needs of our homeless population. So groups such as SOS, and there are many others out there. But, um, so we also work on that program. We of course.
Just a quick question. I'm glad you brought that up. Um, I don't, I think we could do more to promote that. What is, what is the current balance or how much has come in? I know we're probably spending it. How much is donations have come in in the last fiscal, during this fiscal year? Do you know?
Mayor and city council, I'm Natalie Basmatian, your homeless services coordinator. The current budget is approximately $3,000. I would have to check that. We do get a standing donation every month, about $25, um, and we have not used funds out of there in three months. So.
What would you typically use it for?
One of our best examples of using those funds was a woman we had housed a year ago. Her hours were reduced at work due to COVID-19 and she came up short paying her rent. We received a one-time anonymous donation of $1,000 that covered her monthly rent and the late fees and kept her in her housing after our team had gotten her placed.
Back to my original statement, I, I think we could do more communication on this. A lot of people just don't understand and you have to, it's buried on the website. And it's in real small type to, to the link, but I think it's a wonderful program. It has been, and it has some good examples of how we've helped people. But I think to your point Tara, that the community is very generous and, and, uh, would be an opportunity for them to be aware of how they can help specifically augment the personal funds for people. So let's promote it a little bit more.
We'll work on that.
All right. Thanks.
Absolutely. And moving into our contracted services, we have several providers that help us. CityNet is our outreach service provider. They are out in the street five days a week with Officer Carter primarily, interacting with our homeless population and connecting them to services. They then, they then become the case manager for their client and they help them through the county's coordinated system to help them locate housing. So they, from the very beginning to the very end, hopefully get them into housing, that's CityNet. We also have, um, our Costa Mesa temporary bridge shelter agreement, um, where we are in partnership with the Co, City of Costa Mesa, where Newport Beach has access to 20 of the 70 beds in their shelter.
Tara, a couple of questions on that.
Sure.
So we have, uh, contractually, we have access to those beds. We have for a little bit of time now.
Right.
Do we know what the occupancy of those beds are on average?
We do.
The, the 20 that we have contracted? Okay.
Natalie can speak to it if I misspeak, but it's roughly right now, we have 18 people in the shelter. I believe they could have 20, but the shelter right now is closed due to a COVID breakout. So we have averaged 19 to 20 people in the beds since the beginning.
Really?
Yes.
And is that so much sporadic like on the weekends or is it consistent all days of the week?
Mayor, it has been a consistent number for several months now. It's not people coming in and out. It's the same 17 or 18 people that are utilizing those services. I receive a daily text at 7:15 a.m. and a daily email, uh, email itemizing who's in, what their status is as far as healthcare or, um, other service needs. It's a very, um, up-to-date process that we have with the City of Costa Mesa's team.
And then so when someone's there occupying the beds for a consistent amount of time, they're probably being, are they being processed by the county and for permanent placement? Is that?
Yes, they could be connected to the county's continuum of care service, or they may be recipients of the emergency housing vouchers and they're waiting for their housing opportunity. Or they may be in the process of reunifying with their family and need to get all of those pieces in place before they exit the shelter.
Is there an estimate about what that average timeline looks like? 30 days, 45 days or do you?
Or the City of Newport Beach residents, it's been about 80 days. Uh, the, when they go into the shelter, they're told they can stay up to 180 days if they are actively managing their housing plan. We have not had anyone yet exit because of that 180-day limit.
That's great. So the 80 days, uh, for, for Newport residents, but we do take residents who are new to Newport or they're passing through, I imagine.
Yes.
Is their stay about the same, about 80 days?
Theirs tends to be shorter because they realize that we are very serious about the comprehensive strategy and the, um, agreement that they're entering to go into the shelter. Generally, we've had people that maybe stay two days or two weeks. But our long-term people that we've been working with, with CityNet, um, tend to stay longer, but they're also doing a more robust plan to be housed.
And so those who are watching this, uh, this morning, uh, if they're a Newport Beach residence, we require they provide some sort of proof. They went to high school here, they have electricity bill. Is that correct?
Yes, or last known address.
So we're really taking care of our, our own in that scenario. And, and those who are, um, temporary residents, you said the hypothetical of two to two weeks. Do we have any data though on, on, on a, on a solid number or is that too sporadic to have any information on the average day?
Given that the shelter's been in lockdown, that number is, um, based on work in October and November. Uh, we haven't had in and out people because of the closures.
Okay, that makes sense. And are you just asking your opinion, are you satisfied with that, uh, relationship we have jointly with Costa Mesa at the time?
Yes, they have been very communicative with us. Um, they give me updates by phone, by email. I participate on their weekly updates on Tuesdays. I participate on their monthly, um, advisory committee meetings. It's been very easy to work with them at all levels.
And do we have the requisite number of beds still to fully enforce our local ordinances?
At this point, we, we do. Part of the log jam right now is we have people in the shelter with housing opportunities coming up. They haven't moved out to free up more beds.
But, and then, and right now, because we have 18 with 20, that leaves two, uh, two available. Are those two available enough for our officers and CityNet to set, to enforce our local ordinances? So our, 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 our demand's being met as far as our housing requirements under the federal lawsuit?
Well, right now, those two beds cannot be filled because of COVID. The shelter's locked down. So we're not able to enforce the anti-camping if, during the time when the shelter's not available for intakes. Yeah.
Okay, uh, that's going to pass, I'm guessing.
I'm sorry.
That will pass, correct?
Yes, yes, we.
So if in a month's time or so, it's all, it's all behind us and we have on average about 18 that 20 beds occupied. I'm, I'm asking you, is that still sufficient for us to enforce our local ordinances?
We would like to, we would like, yes, it is, but we would also like to track over the coming months what happens when the shelters begin to open. COVID is lifted, we can move people in and out and we can get, we have folks, we have 10 people in town right now with emergency housing vouchers. Once we get them housing, we'd like to see more people coming through the shelter and, and see if that number 20 still holds.
So between the shelter and the housing vouchers, vouchers, which could be used for motels or hotels, we have enough, enough resources available to fully enforce our local ordinances?
When they're all available. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Dixon.
I thank you, Mayor. Well, just to kind of follow up on some of this line of questioning. With the 20 capacity and no COVID restrictions, um, let me ask that same question another way. Is that adequate? Because there are, my understanding in previous conversations and just kind of understanding this as we've gone along, that, uh, sometimes we, we're at capacity with the 20 beds. Is it, uh, something we might want to consider to amend our contract, our agreement with the City of Costa Mesa that would suggest that we had, can go up to 25 or name your number, uh, and do a pro rata share and, and whatever that would cost the City of Newport Beach to give us some, uh, an escape valve, if you will, some breathing room that, because we know, um, I believe that we don't have enough solutions here. We've got, looking at your page here on page 27, all these one, fantastic services. We've have layered on for the last two or three years. They're fantastic. But are they working? So we know we have more homeless currently at the transit center. We all here get, receive letters from people who live on the peninsula, at the piers and know that there are homeless there. And that we are, the residents are, and we are told that, well, wait, wait till we get BeWell up and running. And I'm sure you're going to talk about that in a moment, uh, because that is part of the population that will be serviced through BeWell. But we still have homeless. So how can we identify, uh, where the, uh, the, the opportunities are to relieve, uh, the homeless on the street? Now it's 20, if it's 20 beds, talk about the vouchers. I do know, you and I have talked about this, that the county, uh, is maybe months behind in certifying some of the vouchers. What can we do to accelerate that process? So what I'd like to hear today, all of this is fantastic, what the staff and all of you have put in place. What needs to work better? Because we still have homeless on our streets that our residents do not like to see. What can we do to strengthen, to give you the support and help programmatically, operationally, uh, through relationships with the county? What can we do to solve the homeless problem in Newport Beach? That's what the people are asking us.
That's a very good question. Uh, let me break down to the shelter piece first because the mayor's asking about that and, and now you're asking us about it as well. There have been a lot of discussions in our internal homeless staffing team, Natalie and Officer Carter primarily, and, um, some other folks in the police department. Do we have enough beds? Today, we think we do, but we're also in a certain, we're, we're kind of frozen in time here with these housing vouchers and with COVID. What we'd like to see over the next couple of months is, is there indeed movement and do we still have enough? We do think we might need five more beds. Frankly, we do. I've already put that call into Costa Mesa saying, if there's ever an opportunity, we'd like to talk about that. But again, Natalie also cautions me, well, hold on, let's see if we can get some people placed and get some turnover here before, you know. So in the coming, like I said, in the coming two, three months, we hope we can identify, is 20 the right number? Is 25 the right number? And then how do we go about getting those extra beds?
We're talking about some of the, uh, pay, some of the homeless that are in the shelter for just a matter of a few days. So it means that they're not really accessing the ancillary services. What happens to them? Do they just join, rejoin the homeless environment in Newport Beach?
Some people do. Some people realize that Newport Beach is going to continue to engage with them and they may not want that attention and, and our services. And they move back to where they came from. Uh, they may be out here seasonally during the summer. We tend to have more people that just come to enjoy our beaches and parks and piers. Uh, so that is, that number is always going to be moving. And that's where our team comes into place, where Officer Carter and CityNet are out all, every day that they work to make sure that we know who's there and what they need and how do we connect them to services.
Well, we know they're there. I mean, I'll give you an example, Marina Park, you're well familiar with the two or three or four that have tents on Marina Park. And we hear from the residents who live right there and look at that every day. And they're frustrated that they're still there, day after day, week after week. Um, what do we do? Do we do vouchers? Can we give money to do hotel rooms, motel rooms? What, do we do, do, do we do hotel vouchers?
On a very targeted basis, we'll do that. Um, when there is, this is like right now, when the shelter's closed. If it's, uh, a motel room is a bridge, is a bridge to a shelter bed. It's not a solution. Because the shelter gives the wraparound services that we need to help people be successful and to get placed in housing. But we, yes, we do do hotel rooms on a very specific basis. Those that want to enter a shelter that we can't get a bed for, that have been working with us and with our staff, we will, we will make that happen. Yeah.
All right. But we still have homeless.
We do.
In front of, I mean, consistently.
Yes.
Uh, at Marina Park where we have, right next to the children's park, we have homeless camped out there with brand-new tents. What are we going to do about that specifically?
Well, right now, when the shelter's closed, we cannot enforce anti-camping when we have a closed shelter available. We also, the tents, at least those that the transportation center were given from one of our residents who felt badly that folks were out in the elements. So I will, we will have homelessness in Newport Beach, right? Well, the shelter is a tool, but it's not the solution. That's why we have, we have to just keep working all of these resources that we're outlining to. It's going to take a long time.
Are we watching what the City of Newport Beach, excuse me, the City of Los Angeles is being aggressive and relocating many of their?
I think there's some misunderstandings about the City of Los Angeles and what they're doing. They're not, they're not banning homelessness, you know, camping everywhere. They're taking a very targeted approach. They're saying, okay, you can't be homeless in this location, but you can be homeless in that location. So they're pushing the homeless around the city to different areas.
I, I get that. And so that was going to be my next point. Have we looked at that as a possible solution?
Well, we did. And that's exactly what our police and attorneys looked at. And they said, well, it's not a solution. It's merely asking someone to not camp here, but then they're going to go find someplace else to camp. That's how we see it today. They've just passed that ordinance and we haven't seen it take, really take effect yet, but that's our staff's interpretation of what's going to happen. They don't have enough shelter beds in LA to house everyone, so therefore they can't enforce anti-camping everywhere.
Yeah. And our, our ordinance is much broader. We ban camping kind of throughout the city. So we're in a unique situation, like LA is only banning it in certain areas. We ban it throughout. But, but like, like Tara was saying, you gotta tie it into having the shelter beds available because of COVID. There's been some, you know, minor, um, adjustments that we've had to make based on COVID. But those are going to be ending here soon and we think we'll be back into our, our normal pattern.
Okay. So I accept that. So is that a, an acceptable response then to the residents who are contacting us and complaining that it's a temporary situation with COVID because the shelter is not intaking, all of these reasons? I mean, that's just what everybody has to accept. Is that what you're saying?
Councilmember Dixon, um, certainly I, I know it's very frustrating and we feel frustrated too, so I, I don't discount that at all. But, and I can, Natalie can probably speak to each of those people who are at that Marina Park location. We are making regular contact and having that interaction with them. And I think we've had past discussions too, where it just takes multiple, multiple contacts. And each case is so individual, uh, too, that we work through. And, and so we are on those cases. We, we are interacting with them regularly to get them on the path, but it, it all. We, we are interacting with them regularly to get them on the path, but, uh, it also, we can't force them, um, into certain actions, right? But, but we, we are continuing to work with them, and we want to find that longer-term solution. Because as you know, while the anti-camping ordinance is helpful as a tool, you put somebody in, they come right back out the next day. That, that's not also, y- you know, the ultimate, uh, solution there either. So, we'll keep working at it, um, Ms. Dixon.
Well, I, I appreciate your indulging me in these questions and answers, because you all get the same letters we get. And it's a problem, and I, and it's a problem. It continues to be a problem, and the residents in key areas are frustrated, so keep working it. But look, are you going to be talking about BeWell and when we're going to get started with that? Okay, good, thanks.
So, next up, under the contracted programs, is our BeWell program. We have contracted with MindOC to launch a mobile crisis intervention unit here in Newport Beach. That program will be active, activated next month. Our police and fire are working very closely with their team now on the process and how that will actually work in our city. We're going to bring the mobile, the van to your February 8th meeting and have one of their staffers here to introduce herself, so the community knows who Alyssa is. So, that's our, that's our mobile intervention unit. They will be on, on duty seven days a week, 12 hours a day in Newport Beach. Permanent supportive housing, the city manager will talk about in, um, in a few moments, so I will skip over that. Trellis is a program that our Public Works Department is using right now. This is a local nonprofit that works with those experiencing homelessness to help them get ready to enter back into their workforce again. So, Public Works currently has a grant with Trellis, and the Trellis, um, volunteers are actually doing some work projects throughout the city. It's really important, I'm sorry, did you have a question, Mayor?
I just saw a natural break. I've got a couple requests to speak.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay, Councilwoman Brenner.
Um, well, I could have waited, but, uh, thank you, Kevin. Um, I just wanted to ask, has there ever been a time since we have had our shelter where we have been able to enforce our anti-camping?
Yes, the police can do that if there is a shelter bed available.
Has there been any time that there have been shelter beds available that we could, that our police were doing that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think it's important for people to understand how much is in the works, because our staff is getting beaten up about this from people, and it's, a lot of it is, is really disrespectful and implying that we're not doing anything. And I love this document that you came up with, Tara, because there's a lot of work that has gone into this over the last three years. It's not solved, and I think the understanding is, it's not going to be solved. This is something that we are going to be working on probably forever, unless something drastic changes in our country, but that's, um, so, and you have said that only, we have about 50, but only about four of them are people that have been here continuously for a long time. Most of these are, it's always gonna be transitory where people come in and people go out and, and, um, so, you know, it's not like that's the same 50 people that people have been seeing. But the one issue that I do think is worth talking about is, what are we doing about people that could be dangerous? Because we've had a couple of instances where people have contacted us that, um, there have been altercations. And, um, I don't know if you need to answer that, or if John needs to answer that, but how long, if somebody has an altercation with a citizen, how long can they be kept in jail or, um, taken off of the, the streets, John?
And I'm gonna just jump in just real quick, um, on, on this topic. It, it's one thing to have the ability to arrest people, but it's also the court systems are involved, and it's how long, you know, will those people actually be off the street or in jail if they've committed some type of crime? And, and I think, uh, Chief Lewis is gonna, uh, say so right now, that it depends on the crime that's committed, but typically for the camping violations, the courts will not keep those people in jail, so it's a book and release. So, while a lot of people think that's a, a solution to the problem, ultimately, um, it's, it's not a very good solution, because the people come right back out onto the street, and so you don't have the ability to, it's not like you're removing them per- permanently from that location, you're removing them for an hour or two.
We've heard that, and it takes a lot of police personnel to even just arrest them for a short period, but if there is an altercation where someone looks like they might be dangerous, then what is the process?
So, and Mr. Harp's point is exactly that. I mean, really what happens with these folks is, um, is, it's, it's something that happens through the court process later on. So, it depends on what the, um, what the crime is, what is, um, ultimately, um, charged, what their criminal history looks like, all these, uh, decisions that go into, um, what the actual outcome of this case is. But to answer your question more directly about that incident on the street where we have an individual that is either causing a disturbance, that are in, in violation of some type of law, um, whatever it be, our, our position is to, is to take enforcement action in those circumstances, so, and just like we would with anybody else. So, this isn't, um, when we get these calls, we respond to everything. We, we go out and when if there's, um, if someone needs, if it's found a violation of a, of a section and a physical arrest is appropriate, then that's what we do. There's, um, what we have is, we still have our own, um, our own jail facility here in Newport Beach, and I think that you've seen in other jurisdictions where they've done these, um, site and release types of situations for, um, for lower-level misdemeanors, that's not our direction to our, to our folks on the street. We still take physi- physical custody of individuals. We still, um, process these, these through the court systems, but the reality is, is that when it comes to these low-level misdemeanors, which many times these disturbances end up being, the, the consequences and the outcomes are, are very limited, you know, to the point that we see these individuals, um, back on the street before our officers have time to complete their arrest reports, unfortunately.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I'm a real fan of the BeWell concept, and I look forward to seeing the mobile crisis unit and talking to the, to the guys, and, um, but I, I, I'm, the, the budget, I imagine most of it is because of the staffing of the, of the unit, the, the hours we're, we're trying to cover, is that correct?
Correct, it's, uh, seven days a week, 12 hours a day.
Right. Mm-hmm. Is there a breakdown somewhere of the costs?
I can, I don't have those handy, but I could, we can certainly work with BeWell to get those for you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman O'Neil.
Yeah, in fact, I think the next slide's gonna be covering the costs.
Of our program.
Have you finished this slide? Because if not, I can wait until the next one.
I was just gonna briefly touch on county-wide coordination and state and federal programs, then we'll move into costs, if that's okay.
I'll wait, I'll wait for that then.
Okay. Okay, so I covered Trellis, and I, uh, a key component, of course, is our county-wide coordination. Natalie sits on too many committees to reference here today, they're listed in the document, but it's really important, our work with the central service planning area, that is the area that we were placed in by federal Judge Carter, and we work with the cities in the central SPA on shared resources. And this is where we're able to gain access, when there are beds available and it's not closed for COVID, to the Yale Center in Santa Ana, and also to the emergency cold weather shelter that's in Santa Ana. But those, those two shelters, again, are closed, um, are full and or closed because of COVID, and they've had limited capacity as well because of COVID. Um, also then, emergency housing vouchers, I touched on briefly, that we have 10 people waiting to be placed. This is a really important program. This is what we desire, to see people placed into housing. Natalie and CityNet and Officer Carter work very hard to help them find the apartment, to work through the county coordinated system to get them placed. Unfortunately, that's taking longer than we had hoped. We understand it's federal money coming through the county, but we've got folks that have had vouchers enhanced in September, and we're still trying to get some apartments. So, um, we'll start talking to the county and see if there's anything that can be done from their perspective to expedite that process. And then, of course, Project Room Key was, uh, the hotel program that took place primarily during COVID. It's still available. It's a county program that places, uh, someone in a hotel if they're COVID positive. And Project Room, uh, excuse me, that's Project Room Key. Project Home Key is a program that, from the state, that would, that provides localities funding if there's a motel that can be converted to permanent supportive housing. So, those are the programs that through our central SPA or through our own work here that we target and we try to partake in. Looking now at the costs. Our current costs, um, again, we talk about, we have, this is just our dedicated staff number there is about $373,000 a year. Our homeless assistance, that account you'll see in our budget, that's where Natalie and Officer Carter will do, um, transportation to get someone to their appointments, or to get them a meal, get them some clothes if they're coming off the street and they wanna go into housing, to get them, once we do find them apartment, to get them some of the basic needs to, if, for their apartment. So, that's what those costs are there. And then, of course, our contracted services. Currently, that's about $2.7 million a year. Just with CPI increases, we expect that to go to about $2.76 million next year. This does not include, again, any discussion about additional shelter beds. If in the coming months, we feel that five additional beds are, are needed, we would of course come back and have that discussion.
Okay, is this a good time for a couple of questions?
Absolutely, yes, indeed.
Right. Councilwoman O'Neil.
Yeah. So, maybe a few things, real quick perspective, and then a couple comments. So, just a few years ago, we had pretty much none of this, um, except for, you know, CityNet, and, you know, the city's response just, um, it was just straight-up inadequate. And so, the, you know, we, we started having, we could put a call out into our discussion, uh, we put a call out for expertise, which we knew we had in our community, and there were a lot of people who responded and really helped us overhaul our, our approach. Um, and so I just wanna say, um, you know, there's, there's a massive difference between the way that we've, we're approaching it now and the way we were approaching it then. And, um, you know, and you see the amount of money that we're spending now on an annual basis, and so the response we received from a whole lot of residents is, we're not seeing the difference. And, um, this morning, I drove up to the OCTA, uh, the Orange County Transportation Authority's, um, Transit Center, and, um, I saw at least a half dozen tents there. I know that we've got a bunch of tents down below the Dover Street Bridge. Um, you know, one of the things that we've always, we've, we've taken an approach has been that we can't tolerate permanence on our streets. And, you know, we've seen a lot of people come in and off the, the streets in Newport, um, and a lot of people actually coming off, which has been really impressive. And then, you know, as a matter of perspective, um, you know, I, this is obviously a regional issue, um, massively regional issue, where the city of Newport Beach, when we've, when we've done our own counts, um, we've seen as low as in the twenties of people who are living on the streets in Newport, and as high into the nineties. Um, it's very seasonal for us, just because of the beachside community. Up in Los Angeles County, which is not that far away from us, um, the estimate right now is that it, you know, they've got over 80,000 people living on the streets in the county, and, um, I mean, that's, it, there's a decent chance that they actually have more people living on the streets in LA County than live in Newport Beach, period. Um, and, and, and so when we're looking at this, it's, it's, it's a tough thing to have that perspective, but it's important that we continue to explain it, because when you have the, the numbers that Newport Beach does, we do have the ability to know who they are individually and have contact with pretty much all of them on a weekly basis, which we do, right, Natalie? Yeah. But again, it comes back to the, uh, for a lot of members of our community, it doesn't feel like we've made a much, much of a difference. Um, and, and I, and I understand that. I, I mean, we really do, we've got to, and if you need to hear it from the dais, you're hearing it right now, which is, we cannot tolerate permanence, um, and tents are a sign of permanence. Um, we are, we just cannot tolerate the idea that we're going to, you know, we're going to allow people to continue to live on the streets. It's just not acceptable to anyone up here. It's not acceptable to almost anyone I know in the community. And it's just one quick note, look, I, I know, I, I don't know who was given out tents. I, I don't know who hands money to people while they're in the medians. Um, and I'm sure your motives are pure, and your heart is where it's supposed to be, but please stop. Um, it does not help. It hurts. It's counterproductive. We need, you're seeing right here the amount of services just the city alone provides to people to come up and off the streets. This isn't, this doesn't even take into account the county's, um, expenditures, which are massive. There are a ton of options and opportunities for people who are on the streets to come off the streets, and with a lot of people around them to help. It does not help to give direct, to, to, to give money to people who are standing in the medians waiting. It does not help to give tents to people, to give them more permanence on the streets. We have the resources, we are working with, with folks. Please, please don't do that. Again, I know your motives are pure, but it's, it does not help the cause. But again, I, we've gotten to the point where we have an overabundance of resources available, and we cannot, we, we just, I agree with our residents, we cannot tolerate seeing the permanence on our streets, and tents are an example of that. So, we've gotta double down on that going forward, and that's, I think you're hearing that from up here, but anyway, I, I appreciate the efforts.
Um, the mayor stepped out, so I'll just continue since I was next in line. Um, I certainly support that, I'm sure we all do, and just plead with people to help the city do what it's here to do. Uh, I'm trying to break apart some of the, uh, kinks in the system that are no fault of staff, certainly, but it's outside program. So, the county voucher, so I'm just reading your numbers here. The county received 1,035 home housing vouchers in 2021, and 10 people experiencing homelessness in Newport Beach were awarded a voucher and now located. But how many people are waiting now? How many vouchers are outstanding? Or what, what's happening with the county, and what can we do about it?
We have, of those 10 people that were awarded vouchers, one woman moved into her new apartment last weekend, um, and then we have nine other people that are still awaiting placement. A second person that has one of those vouchers, uh, secured a unit in Huntington Beach, and we're waiting for the Orange County Housing Authority to certify the apartment so she can move in. Uh, we're anticipating she'll move in sometime next month. The other eight are i- either in our shelter. We have one person in a motel, and then three of the other people are street-level homeless while they're waiting either to go into this shelter, which has been closed, or from the street into an apartment.
All right, so what can we do to help this with the county? Did they have some rapid, uh, task force, uh, rapid response task force similar to what we have here in Newport Beach to accelerate this? This is ridiculous. I mean, getting the vouchers is fantastic, it's, it, and I know the United Way is working with apartment owners to identify, and apartment owners have served up hundreds of units that take these vouchers, that the management takes the vouchers. So, um, I'm, I guess what I'm saying to you, I don't want you folks to be as frustrated as we are, but we can help. Uh, and I know Grace talks with the chief administrative officer of the county on a regular basis, I'm sure you're having these same conversations, but we need to do more pressure. I mean, this is really unex- it is unacceptable. Um, and the Project Home Key, I'm familiar with Room Key, but Home Key, I'm reading your, uh, the city, down here, the cities of Costa Mesa, Anaheim, and Huntington Beach applied to Project Home Key to convert three motels into permanent supportive housing. Have we applied to Project Home Key?
No, because we need a hotel motel willing to sell their property to be a par- to the city.
So, and we're looking at potential properties?
The mayor.
Well, there are hotels, uh, motels on Newport Boulevard.
They need to be within the city of Newport Beach for us to participate in the funds.
No, I know, but there's some there, and-
This might be part of the permanent housing, supportive housing discussion.
Yeah, Councilmember, I think we had done outreach, we just have not had the, um, the, the interest, uh, to do that.
Okay, well, that's a shame, because there are a lot of motels in Newport Beach. Okay, all right, but the, my bottom line is, don't be frustrated. If we have to exert pressure, let us know, okay? All right, thanks.
Councilwoman Brenner.
I was just gonna say, we could talk for hours about this. We could talk probably for days about this. The part I think that's pertinent to what we're doing today is that our residents are saying to us, spend the money you need to spend to take care of this problem, because we don't wanna see it on the streets. And I think that part you're going to be talking about with permanent supportive housing is part of that solution, because once you can move people into housing, you can clear out beds in the shelter, and BeWell is coming online right away. We're right on the cusp of a lot of good things happening, but the one point that Diane made earlier that I think we really need to do a better job in is, um, we need to be able to talk to our citizens about if we do a public-private partnership with them on some of these things. We did it on the animal shelter, we do it all the time, that our problem with permanent supportive housing is finding land, and we'd need to do a better outreach to our community to say, yeah, this is what we'd like to do, and this is what we need you to help us do, like to do, and this is what we need you to help us do, because maybe you have property or maybe you have resources that could help us get the property for the permanent supportive housing. So I think we do need to be more aggressive in our foundation or whatever we, whatever avenue we choose to take in partnering with our general public to have them help us solve the problem.
And I think that's a perfect segue into the last slide. That is the piece of the puzzle that's the most challenging, right, and needs that final step. And that's frankly why the vouchers, why it's so challenging, there's just not enough of the housing piece to put them into. So, while we have the nine or 10 vouchers, I think there's dozens or even hundreds more probably in some of the other cities. You're thinking of the folks in Anaheim, in Santa Ana, Garden Grove, all the other places of Orange County, so. So that's a piece we also, the council has been committed to, as you recall, last year, the city committed to providing 3 million towards a project, part of that public-private partnership. We had, we did an RFP, and we have two very experienced affordable housing developers looking for sites. They've been looking for sites, I want to say, the last year and a half plus right now, and that's just been the challenge. The community development director and I have been on multiple calls with them, and we get these status reports. It's a little bit discouraging, because they have gone through so many properties, reaching out, and just hasn't been able to get to a point where we can get to a deal and it pencils out and has that work. So, to the extent we continue to look for different ideas and different, you know, assistance from community members of finding that appropriate piece of land or property, whether it's, you know, through this affordable housing, our permanent supportive housing funds, the Project Home Key, there's funds there. So I, I think the key piece is finding the, the properties to be able to do that with. And we, as a city, have been committed to doing our share for that, and we'll, we'll continue to be working on this throughout.
Just a quick question, to follow up on that, I, I appreciate that it's hard to find land in Newport Beach. What about in unincorporated areas of the county? Would that give us any extra opportunities to look at some land?
Certainly, I think that would be having to touch in and work together with the county then on that. And we can certainly explore those avenues as well.
If we come with some financial incentives, anyway, just an idea.
Yes, I, I agree with you on that.
If we're reaching a dead end here within the city limits, where else can we go within the county?
Yeah.
Unincorporated areas.
Right, right. So, there'll be more on this. And then with that, that's what we were planning to discuss today, at least on the, in terms of the budget development and the impacts there. The final topic I wanted to talk about in terms of the service level pressures is really continuing to look at our staffing levels. And this year has certainly been a unique one, we've seen from, from the pandemic, and we do feel the impacts of the staffing strains and the competitive environment for that. And as we do every year, we do look very carefully at our staffing levels and what the appropriate staffing level should be. So I just want, I'm in the middle of that now with all the department directors, so I don't have specific proposals at this point, but they will be coming with a recommended budget. We certainly always take a look at on our part-time staffing level, do they make sense to stay part-time? Would some of them be more cost-effective and efficient to be full-time? Contract resources, where they're essentially working almost at a full-time level, does it, you know, and given the legality on things too, to make sure that we're doing that appropriately, looking there. And there are certainly areas where we continue to see continued elevated, high workload. And I'm thinking particularly of the community development area and the permit counters and, and that sort of places. And also with our Harbor Department, which is a new department and still evolving, so we're still continuing to look at the staffing levels there on that. So, certainly, there will likely be some proposed adjustments I will bring forward for council consideration. Generally though, I'll, I'll make note that I don't think there'll be a high fiscal impact, but, because there'll essentially be a reallocation, whether to contract dollars, you know, into full-time, so I don't think the fiscal impact, it will be significant, but it's still something to, to consider, and I'd like to continue to look at that each year as we do with the annual budget with council. And with that, that's the end of this portion, kind of on the operating side. And it could be certainly a good point if you wanted to take public comment or for a break before we go into the CIP portion.
I think we have a couple more questions in the dais. Great job to the ladies on the presentation. Councilman O'Neill.
Yeah, so, real quick, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. First, it's, I mean, it's, it's unbelievable to me that we're having this positive discussion about the budget, simply given the, what we've been going through for the last couple of years, especially at the finance committee level. So, I mean, obviously, this is really good news, it's just sort of a dose of prudence is really, really important as we're talking about this, because, I mean, one of the slides we saw was a substantial reduction in our unfunded pension liability, but our unfunded pension liability is still $235 million. I mean, that is a very big number, and it's worth remembering that. It's also worth remembering that CalPERS had a great year last year in its investment return, but it missed its discount rate by, in two of the last four years. And so, having a, you know, anticipation that they're going to continue to be able to reach their discount rate is not exactly something that I, I would put a lot of stock into, and so that's why we continue to be really aggressive and also really, really prudent when it comes to that. I mean, 18 months ago, we had hiring freezes in our city, we had, we were deferring capital improvement projects. We were unsure if we'd even be able to make that additional $5 million discretionary payment into our unfunded pension liabilities. And fortunately, it looks like our, you know, our aggressive approach to investing in our core infrastructure projects and our public safety has caused a lot of people to want to move to Newport Beach. And so we've seen that in our property values, certainly in substantial increases in the property taxes. I've also heard, of course, that there's a lot of people who have appreciated the approach that Newport Beach has taken to COVID policies, and so we've seen people moving here. We've also seen a substantial people, a number of people who not just want to live here, but also enjoy here, shop here, visit here. And so, I'd just like to just quickly note again, this is that moment where we have the ability to invest in the future, and it's really that grasshopper and ant fable that we have, and we have the ability to store up for the next winter that's coming, because it's going to happen. I, and I just don't know, you know, I don't know when it'll be, but there are going to be hopefully future councils that look back on decisions that we make in this coming year and say, thank you for doing that, simply because the, you know, as we talk about CIP coming forward, the ability to make these decisions is massive, especially when we're, and I know we're going to talk about this, but one of the things worth remembering is that when the unfunded pension liability is exhausted and brought down to zero, there will be 40, at least $40 million of money, of expenditures freed up for anything a future council wants to spend it on. And, just a quick reminder, term limits, you can run again on city council when that comes around, I just want to point that out. But anyway, so, for, for the three people who are termed off in this coming year, you can run again, just want to point that out. So, but anyway, the, but that, there will be $40 million that will not be required to be spent on unfunded pension liability when that is freed up. And so when we're talking about, for example, a police station, that will have a substantial amount of money required, that is money that can be spent on a police station, that is money that, I'm sorry, police headquarters, yeah. So I just want to point this out, like, there is coming a day when there is going to be an amazing amount of revenue that, expenditure that a city council will be able to use. And it's a lot of the decisions we've been made right now that, that we can provide those opportunities. So, anyway, I just want to point out that we don't know what the future looks like. We, I just, I'm shocked, if you told me we'd be having this presentation 18 months ago, I wouldn't have believed you. So it's really, it really is that grasshopper and ant issue. Thanks.
Yeah, just note that one year after three of us got elected, Will was a finance committee man and helped really steer this early on as well. So thank you, Will, for that vision. Diane was chair of the finance committee, everyone know that. Okay, do we have any other comments from the dais before we go up to the public? Okay, public comments on this item, please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This is quite a lot to comment on in three minutes, but working backwards through your presentation this morning, I do not want to denigrate anything at all about the city's homeless effort, but I want to point out that the council task force for the homeless was created in November 2019. It had a very specific task of analyzing and reporting to you on four issues related to homelessness, and was going to terminate when it made that report or on December 31st, 2020, whichever came sooner. That's over a year ago. So if the task force still exists and is continuing to meet, and it is a task force, if it is a forever committee addressing a forever problem, it, like the finance committee, has become a standing committee, and standing committees are supposed to hold their meetings in public. The comment that we heard about the parks in Newport Beach all being provided by or funded by developers in our city, I think always needs to be tempered by the caveat that, to the extent that that is true, I don't think they were provided as gifts for the existing residents, but they were a requirement of the development to serve the added need created by the new development. As to the presentation, we heard about expenditures, if you can remember way back then, we heard about a number of master plans that we have in Newport Beach to attend to things we need to attend to. Two of them that were not mentioned were our water and wastewater master plans, over which the council has somewhat less discretion, because those are part of enterprise, enterprise activities that the city engages in. But I would mention, we do have those master plans, and their existence and the need for adjustments to them receives much less attention in Newport Beach than it does when things like water and wastewater are provided by a dedicated district. And then finally, on the revenue presentation, we heard about the great new revenue we're expecting from the Newport Center Marriott. Those of us who read Stu News have seen Gary Sherwin's columns over the last many weeks telling us that that is part of a move towards changing Newport Beach to a much more upscale scenario with fewer rooms and higher costs. I would point out that that is in the coastal zone, barely, and when one makes changes of that kind, including the physical changes, there is supposed to be a coastal development permit. It is the responsibility of the city to do that, and I don't think it's ever been done. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please. Seeing Mr. Harp on the standing committee, the Supreme Court denied cert on Boise, correct?
That's correct.
So the, good, and then can you explain why the Boise case is how we're in this situation? Obviously COVID has added an extension to the situation, but...
Yeah, so, under Boise, in essence, what it came down to is so that you have to have some type of shelter available in order to enforce your anti-camping ordinances. And ultimately, I think that because of COVID, there's been a restriction, even though we have beds available, there's been a restriction on bringing people in and out of those beds. And so, we expect those restrictions to be ending here in the near future, which will kind of put us back into the situation that was, that we were in before, before these COVID restrictions, where if there's beds available, then you can enforce your anti-camping ordinances, which is, which is one of the tools that is necessary to, to deal with this problem, but it's just one of the tools.
At which time we can sunset the task force?
I have to do a little bit more looking into the task force, maybe it needs to be extended, maybe it doesn't. I don't know if they've completed all of their, their mission or not, so I think it's an interesting point that he raised, and we'll take a look at that.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, did you, did you want to break, Grace, or are you just suggesting that? I think we could keep pushing, but...
We can certainly keep pushing, we have no problems. It's at the pleasure of the council.
Okay, okay, we'll keep going.
Okay. Just give us one minute to set up, we'll have Dave Webb, our Public Works Director, present on this section.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor Muldoon, council. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director. With me today also is Jim Houlihan, our Deputy Director and City Engineer. And today we want to spend some time going through, starting the planning process for upcoming CIP and, and looking at programming in various projects. So, with that, I'll jump in. Just, just a note too, because I do get this asked from the audience once in a while, what we're going to show you today is staff suggestions. We worked with City Manager Liang and various department heads, and nothing's in, in stone, it's really elected officials, your officials, who make the determination. So we're going to make suggestions today on it. We're going to look for your feedback so we can start programming and coming up with the early CIP for March. So, with that, I'm going to jump into the budget here. Just as a background, our capital improvement program, our current budget, as you may remember, it's about $75, $75 million right now in programming, new and rebudgeting funding. And so we started looking at, as Jim started putting the capital improvement program in for next year, right now, we're kind of looking at potentially maybe a $70 million regular program budget. And with that, as our finance director pointed out, we're going to have some surplus funding that we're going to want to program. So, in that surplus funding, we've got some general fund surplus, we've talked about, it's over a three-year period. We also have the American Rescue Plan Act money that was given to the city that we need to program, and also some adjustments to the ongoing baseline budget fundings. We think we might be about $86 million when we're done, and we'll find more as we go along and get your input in the community. And then, again, in March, we'll start looking at that.
Sorry to interrupt, we were going to announce conflicts before we get started and then have the council members leave the room if, if one of their conflicts come up and the council wants to specifically address it.
Yeah, let's go, let's go down the line, thank you. Councilman O'Neill, do you have any?
I don't think there's a ton of Newport Coast in this, so no.
Okay, great. Councilman Duffield? Okay, Councilwoman Dixon?
I don't think so either, but if there is, I'll, we'll do something about it.
Councilwoman Brenner?
I'm trying to think, Erin, is there something that I have to be recused on? It seems like it was water.
Let me announce someone and see if you guys agree.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah, that's better.
Remember, sir, the conflict.
So, Councilwoman Brenner has a potential conflict with storm drain system construction based on her real property interest. Mayor Potemblam has a potential conflict of interest based on the Balboa Island drainage improvements based on real property interests. Councilmember Muldoon has a potential conflict of interest with Sunset View Park pedestrian bridge based on business interests. Girls and Boys Club on East Bluff related to his real property interests. Fire Station Number Two related to his business interest. Streetlight rehabilitation program and traffic signals related to his business interest, and those are the conflicts that we noted.
Thank you, just, I'll add a little bit of that. Sunset View Park, there was mention of putting utilities in that might involve back, backhaul basically for licensed spectrum, mainly wireless. So I could have, I'm not in that business yet, but a company I consult is considering having technology for that. The Girls and Boys, Boys Club is actually outside of the recusal area, but it's so close, just to be safe, I like to do it. Fire Station Two also had a wireless component potentially at the location, and street light, street light rehabilitation program. May at staff decides to put some, some, some more connectivity for wireless, which again is not a real conflict at this time, but I recuse myself of a potential future business conflicts. Thank you.
And thank you for those, thank you, Erin, for that reminder. So let's move into then talking about some of the surplus funding we recognize. So, we're talking about a $31 million general fund surplus, again, that's over that three-year period we've discussed earlier. Some of the thoughts on that, early thoughts, would be putting maybe $5 million towards our unfunded pension liability, and that would add to what we've already talked before. We're also talking about maybe shoring up the FFP plan, so maybe $10.5 million towards that plan fund. And then that leaves another $15.5 million towards various neighborhood enhancement and capital improvement projects, it's pretty much within council policy, usually about 50% of that. And then, of course, this year, due to the federal government, we have the $10.1 million in American Rescue Plan Act money that we have to put. And again, the important thing for the residents to realize, this is one-time money, and it's prudent, and the council does this, to put it into programs that aren't going to be ongoing, so we're recommending a one-time capital commitment for that money. So as we talked about a little earlier, the city does a great job in planning efforts, and it's really paid off. It lets us program in the future, know what's coming up. We have our facility finance plan, which is basically a good rough estimate and schedule of our construction replacement costs for significant buildings, and the plan is funded by general contribution, general fund contributions and development fees. This is just the program chart here, I know it's really... I know it's really small detail, but it just recognizes that we have, we have our buildings, and we plan out in multiple years so we can kind of see what's coming and start budgeting for it. Under that note, the next thing's up coming in our plan, and what we're going to recommend or suggest you use the ten point five million dollars for would be seven point eight million dollars is, would be funded maybe towards our Peninsula Point Fire Station Library. That's the next building coming up in our plan, and actually is calling out, and I'll have a little bit on that later. And then the other two point seven million, just going into the fund balance of the plan, because we have a lot of needs coming up. I listed some here. We've got Benita Creek Sports Park that we put in the artificial turf. That was the first sports turf we put in with the city in 2015. It's coming up for replacement. We have a police building coming up, land purchase, Santa Barbara. So we do have some big commitments, and it's probably good to put some money towards the balance there. So let's, let's talk a little bit about this project that's coming up this year. We're going to recommend this go into the budget. It's the Balboa Peninsula Fire Station and Branch Library. This is one of our oldest facilities left. As you know, we've been doing, we just did the Corona Mar Library. We've done work at various fire stations. We've done Mariners. We're doing the one on the peninsula. But now we need to look at this building. It's, it's a joint building, two buildings joined together by a common wall, built in nineteen sixty-two. Again, I mentioned it's coming up for replacement this year, and maybe, maybe we can have construction start about 2025 if you wanted to start this project. And then just some preliminary thoughts on maybe how to go forward on this. I've talked to the various department heads. We've toured the facilities who are involved in this. So the Fire Chief says we probably just need a three-to-four person fire station. It's, it's not the biggest facility. It's got one unit down there. He doesn't anticipate it growing because it's backed up by the Peninsula Fire Station at now thirty-six, thirty, thirty-eight. We still need a small branch library down there. There's a use down there. The library director talked about having some level of presence there. I talked to our Recreation Department. Laura Detwiler thought it'd be a great place for maybe a small totlot or something because there's always a need on the peninsula for more greenery. And it's actually a large lot when you go down there and take a look at it. There's a lot of, a lot of space in that lot. We could use it a little better. And then through our Public Works side, we, we talked about maybe even in the fire bay or something next to it, putting in an equipment bay. And the reason why we're suggesting that is, you know, our corporate yard's up close to Coast to Mason, Newport Boulevard. But daily, our tractors, the beach rakes and everything are driven down to the beach, the big equipment. Why not park some down near the peninsula where we use it all the time and save the back and forth? It'd be a labor savings, and, and we have an emergency response. We could get something there real quick. So if we have the room, maybe there's an opportunity for that. But this kind of starts the community discussion. Nothing in framework, what sizes, things like that. But that's what we were thinking from a department head level. Might work well in this property. And I can stop here if we want to talk about any individual projects, Mayor. We can go through and then get council comments later.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Dave. Councilmember Brenner and I went down to the library and the fire station a week or two ago. One thing that they did, and this all makes sense with what you heard and I, and we heard, but they did talk about the need for more parking, that those who are, what happens? You have a shift, and they have their cars there. And then, when the shift changes, the new people are coming in, but they have no place to park because the shift people are still there from the prior shift. And so they all have to kind of sit in their cars and wait till they come out and then pull in. It's just, would make it probably a little simpler. But I like your, Laura Detwiler's idea about a small community park. There really isn't a park in that vicinity other than going over to Peninsula Park. And even then, there's not really...
You have Marina Park, and then the Peninsula Point Association put their own little, they, they, nice job they did. They put something over G Street. But there's really nothing between other than the beaches. So there's not a playground. There is Peninsula Parks.
Right. I mean, that's a good idea.
And this is where, the peninsula's wide right there. Island, street and stuff, there's a lot of communities. So maybe a little totlot might work. Laura Shirley could speak to that as we go through the process of the needs there. And I think there's a lot of space there. Remember, there's a, the Nautical Museum is temporarily housed in this facility. So there would be talk about where would that go? I mean, it wasn't meant to permanently be here, but we'd have to talk about that. There are some significant trees we'd have to talk about. I know that's always a community concern. But back where those trees are, it's all open space, and it's not utilized. So that might be where the park is. I've heard for street parking needs, you could actually, maybe the site could be pushed in a little and put parallel, perpendicular parking along the street and add double the parking for the residents in that area. There's a lot of opportunities, and we want to obviously work with the community and however the council wants to move forward on this project. So we're recommending putting this in the program this year.
Good. Thank you.
I'm sure you'll hear from her. Go ahead.
All right, we're going to move on then to, and again, I mentioned some future other projects coming up in the facilities plan. So we, Benita Creek is pretty straightforward. The turf we expected would last about ten years. So we'll reassess this if we can get another eleven, twelve years out of it. Laura's crews do a lot of management and keep that turf in prime shape. But it's a heavily played park. That's the first sports turf we put in. We just did Grant Hal, as you remember. I'm going to talk about another one coming up here. So that's the great thing about your planning effort because you see these things coming, you're putting money aside. And I really wish other cities, I've worked with others, that don't do this, and they're kind of on surprises, like, oh, we got to take care of this now? We have no money. You guys are very good about programming out, so. The police facility needs to be replaced, as you know. And right now, it's in the plan for 2023. I know that sounds like a long ways away, but ten years go by in a blink. And it's also, these are very complex facilities with the communications or jails and helic ports and all the other things. So there's going to be some planning effort to start this project. With that, the next thing that hasn't really been determined in the FFP that's in there is facility land purchase. And I bring this up today because we've been talking about it. And it's, as again, the plan lets us plan ahead. That's why we're talking today. And there's opportunities we might be able to take advantage of. Currently, we're in a different real estate market coming out of COVID. Residential's very hot, commercial's going down. Work at home's been very a big presence. We're talking about commercial space. Do we need all this commercial space? The airport area is in transition. So we might, we might want to talk about, should we start looking at a land purchase or planning for it? Police Chief and I were talking just recently, and the prior chiefs, they think the airport area is a good place to be for new police station, keeping in mind that they are oftentimes going north to the county. They have a jail facility. They're going right to the Harbor Court there. They're doing a lot of transport. And, and police, unlike fire, is, doesn't have to be stationed centrally because they're mobile all the time. Their cars are basically stationed in the community. And this is a resource center. And they have quick access from here through Newport Coast, MacArthur, Jamboree, or down into the city. So it might, might be a good thing to look at and maybe start looking at. I've also talked to some developers and keeping on, they're starting to buy this property up there. There, there's one right now that's going to turn some commercial to residential. And the plan is they buy it, they lease it, they, they keep the commercial leased out while they're doing their entitlements. Maybe the city does the same thing. Maybe we find a piece of property, and we hold it, and we lease it back until we're ready to use it because the opportunity for the price might be now. And again, I'm not a realtor. I'm just, we're just kind of making sure you're aware of what we see as maybe an opportunity, and there might be something we want to look at. And lastly, the other, this is just a thought we kick around internally, but the current facility, you know where the police station is, is pretty high-dollar real estate and could probably turn into some level of housing or something that's, could be sold back. And knowing the market, we could probably pay for the commercial site with the cost of this site if you did some, you know, looking into. There might be an opportunity there, not, not trying to speculate. So we think that there's probably some discussion we should start talking about, if, if you would, on, on the land purchase and maybe looking for, further, further in that. And then lastly, the Santa Barbara Fire Station's coming up. And how that goes, it plays a little different. You know, our scenario is, well, if you move the police station, well, then maybe there's a way to flip the fire station because now you have an open lot. A lot of times, these public facilities are, are better to build and move into than try to relocate. Like, we did do that when we did the Corona Mar Facility because we had the ability. But it's expensive to run temporary things. In the case of a police station, between the jails and the communication and all the, it's, it would be astronomical to try to set up a temporary facility. It'd be better to build one and move into it. So that's the thoughts on here, and I'll stop here if there's any questions or thoughts. Okay? So moving forward, we've talked about the other, the other fifteen point five million I mentioned earlier, how maybe we program that for neighborhood enhancements. So our suggestion is, as you know, we're kicking off the Phase One for the Balboa Island Drainage. That's where we're turning it from the old manual gate valve system into an automated pump system. So Jim's working with his staff right now to develop the plans for the pump station, the storm drain that would go down, park, the backbone. We think we should program about five million dollars into that. That, that'll be coming forward in the next couple of years for construction. We looked at our pavement management plan. We've heard about, yes, the city has a lot of management plans. We use these, and they, to our benefit, we can see forward again. And we see that we could use a boost in there. We, we are maintaining council's directed a minimum eighty pavement condition, but we could still use some money. There's some big projects coming up. As you know, we're doing Jamboree right now. It's taking, I'm sorry, Coast Highway right now. Sorry, Joey, it's going right through your community and Wills. We are coming up with Jamboree. It's going to be a big project coming up. A couple of other big ones. Balboa Boulevard slated for repavement. Particularly, we just had the Underground District go through there. Did a lot of street damage cuts. We need to take care of that. And then, as Jim was looking through, when he did some field surveys recently, we were down in Balboa Village, and it's starting to show its wear. So we thought we'd pull that forward. So there's two Balboa pavement projects we'd like to take. East Coast Highway between Jamboree and MacArthur. You're probably starting to see, if you're like me, I'm a pavement geek, and I'm starting to see the fines come out, the brown that starts showing up on the surface. That means it's cracking, and it's starting to fail. So we, we, we want to see, maybe get ahead of that, and maybe replace that area. And then Superior's in the plan from West Coast Highway up to Placentia. We think we could start to the design and start moving a little ahead, if we have the, the money for it. So that's a suggestion.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil?
Yeah, just real quick. This is a really good example of what I'm talking about when I'm talking about the, the grasshopper. Balboa Island needs a lot of improvement, capital improvement. It's not particularly sexy stuff that's going to be, you know, you're going to, we're going to enjoy it. I guess Mayor Pro Tem Blom will really enjoy it because there'll be lots of heavy equipment, and he'll get to, you know, go sit on them. But, but my, but my point is, this is a really, really good example of the kind of stuff that we need to be planning for now and saving for now because we know it's coming. We've got to do something about the Balboa Island Drainage. And this is a great project. Looking forward to it. It'll be phenomenal. But it's, you know, there's a lot of street maintenance, a lot of it, that's required on the island right now. There's a lot of, you know, this. We can probably time some of it with the undergrounding that, you know, we're looking at doing. But there's going to be a lot of work on the island coming up. And so, setting aside funding, frankly, even into, you know, its own separate fund if we needed to, needs to happen because we know this is coming. It's very expensive, but it's stuff that needs to, we need to be doing. And I appreciate that we're starting to see substantial amounts set aside for these projects. Like I said, we know they're coming. We need to be doing it. And I love that we're spending a lot of time and effort on street maintenance. It's one of those things, I keep getting told by people over and over again, when they drive into Newport, they know the difference. You can feel it on your car. And we need to maintain that because that matters. I will just point out real quick, this is going to matter to not very many people, but when you are going, when you're driving over the seventy-three, let's see, is it MacArthur? Is it, is it MacArthur? When you're going on MacArthur and you're going over the seventy-three, that is not ours. I just want to point this out because it's driving me crazy, the number of potholes that are over there. It is actually the city of Irvine's. And I want to point this out because it is driving me crazy. And so I'm, we're trying really hard to work with the city of Irvine to improve those. But I want to point out again, we don't tolerate potholes in our city. To Dave's credit, but it's because we're spending like five million dollars on, on street pavement rehab and things like that. So I just want to point this out. This stuff is expensive, but you can see the difference, and it matters. Thanks.
And thank you for that, Mr. O'Neil. And true, that, that area is between Jamboree and seventy-three. I get comments, I'm like, it's not Newport Beach. We talked to, thank you for your patience. We'll go fill them if you like, if you give us a trade.
Yes, we do. We give you direction. Councilman Brenner?
That's sort of the answer to my question. So I'm getting a lot of people saying to me, so what's wrong with our roads in Corona Mar? Why are we having to go through all of this? Can you talk just a little bit about that?
A good question, and some of it's preventive maintenance. When you do preventive maintenance, you're, you're, actually, it's a very financially savvy way to do it because you get ahead of the problem. It's so much cheaper to take care of a road ahead of time by slurries and overlays versus letting it break down to a complete reconstruction mode. It's very expensive versus a slurry at, I don't know, ten cents a square foot down to an overlay at two dollars a square foot. You have to rebuild that thing. You're looking ten dollars a square foot. It's, it's a lot of money. So what you're seeing on Coast Highway, again, the pavement geek in me pays attention on that number two lane, the outside. You start seeing ruts and breakups and things like that. That's a future pothole about to happen. Good rainstorm might bring that forward, and that shows the sign that the pavement needs attention. So we're, we're taking care of those problems. Up in the residential streets, we do slurry programs. I think there's an overlay project coming up there. There's a couple of streets that are reaching overlay status that we'll cut off a little bit and then put a, a new layer on it. So it, it's a good thing that they're seeing that. And thank you for that. By the way, I started smiling when Mr. O'Neil talked about forty million dollars in ten years because things that keep me up at night is when I'm talking to Mr. Blom about, you know, the whole island wants their whole streets replaced. You know, that's tens of millions of dollars replaced Balboa. And they've been on us for years, and we're like, just hang on, we're getting there. Let's get the underground in. So there'll be money available, and they, they should love to, to take care of that.
Wait ten years.
Anyway, let's move on. So another item we're, we're suggesting, this is, this actually is noted as a proposed project in the FFP, but we're recommending to go ahead and go forward. And, and we were talking about moving it into the, the document anyway. But go ahead and plan and build this out of surplus money. Laura Detwiler and the Recreation Committee's been looking at artificial turfs. As I said, we've done Benita Creek. We just did Grant Hal. This is the next one on the PBNR's list. It's been a great program. It allows a lot of programming. Brings our maintenance costs down. So we're suggesting to turn a Royal Park into a synthetic turf, sports park. Be about one point four million dollars for that project.
Can I just say something? I think this is one of the best-kept secret parks in Newport Beach. I mean, how many people know?
Kind of tucked back there.
Do many, this is in your district, Mr. O'Neil, is that right? Oh, it's yours?
No offense taken.
No offense. I apologize. I, I mean, do people really enjoy it? I'm thrilled that it's there. I'm not critical of it at all, but it's a hidden gem. When I drive down Vice, and I go, a Royal Park? Really? So that's good. Keeping our parks in good shape. Thank you.
Moving on to the next set here. So another suggestion of ours, typically, the council puts about five million dollars to general fund into the CIP program. And that's just for general citywide stuff, storm drains, streetlights, various pavement, concrete. We're suggesting this year with the surplus that we go from five to six million dollars. Whether we do that in the future, we'll keep looking at it. But the City Manager and I talked, it'd be good to do it one time because we do need a little shot in the arm in some areas, particularly it's streetlights and signals. We have some need there. So we could, we could bolster those programs with some surplus.
Can I just add one more comment? I've said this probably every year that I've been on council. This is a compliment to our Public Works staff because, as you just said, that we put from the general fund about six million or five million, six million. But if you look on the first page of your presentation, the total capital improvement, improvement budget is seventy-four point nine million. Of the new funding is thirty-five point six. So which means staff is securing, successfully securing grants from external sources, taxpayer funds at work from the federal, state, and county levels. And that's what funds our capital improvement budget, especially for the infrastructure needs of the city.
And, and again, we usually talk that in our normal CIP, and if the folks need it. There's gas tax measure, and grants, there's a lot of fun to go into the, the program every year. And then I noted on the bottom here, we worked with the Community Development. As you know, our housing element general plan is taking a lot more resources. So they're asking for another five hundred thousand, basically, to finish that project up. So we'd suggest using surplus money to, to bolster that and hopefully complete the general plan and housing elements. And then, speaking of master plans, one area we really haven't fully programmed, And then speaking of master plans, one area we really haven't fully programmed, we've talked about the FFP, the Facility Finance Plan, and the FMMP, which is our major maintenance plans for buildings. But our parks, we've kind of been building as, as pay as you go type things on major replacements, other than some of the turf replacements we talked about. But when a backstop goes out or something like that, we'll just work it maybe through the $5 million amount, replace that, or Laura's budget will take care of it. But because we have 65 parks, various sizes, ages and things, Cliff Park, we've been spending a lot of time on some others, Grand Hal, there's regular maintenance that needs to happen and major maintenance, significant dollars. So we suggested this year maybe putting $250,000 and doing a study and assessment of our park system, just like we did with our, our buildings, and we have that one, the FMMP. And, and look at these things and start programming out too. What kind of costs and needs are we going to have in the future? So this would be a study undertaken and would develop it just like the FMMP, and then you guys would see that annual, and we'd work with that in the budget programming. And we're hoping we can get that funded and get that started this year. And then finally, there is a little leftover, 2.35 million basically, in programming for neighborhood enhancements. We're just suggesting some things. And again, I emphasize these are suggestions, because the, the community does have needs, and they'll be talking to you during the process. But some of these are from prior years. That first one there, we talked about additional landscape enhancements. You remember last year, we talked about Newport Boulevard a little. We couldn't get to it and have no money. That's the center medians that are not irrigated, a little tired, one in the tooth. And the sides need a little work over from Coast Highway to the city limit. We also heard last year, they'd like to do some work on Coast Highway by the San Antonio River, north side by the Mobile Home Park. There's a dirt slope in there. They'd like to get that landscape. So we'd suggest we can probably get that this year. There's a couple other areas in town that we've heard about some enhancing the landscaping. So we're thinking about $650,000 there. Another project we're working on, a year and a half ago, I think, Diane, that community, the Peninsula Point folks brought to our attention, that their street ends need some work. They were never taken care of. When we did it in West Newport and all the street ends there, if you go down to Peninsula Point, there's landscaping issues and things like that that we pointed out, parking and stuff. So we just had a community meeting with them two, two and a month, two and a half months ago, I think. So we're starting some design efforts. This would be the construction point to kind of clean those up. One of the things we're also talking about is maybe building a walkway out to the wedge. There's been some talk about that. We've had some ADA requests to harden that and get them out there. So that would be included in this too, to try to do something. We have to get through Coastal, obviously, but I think it's a good positive project. A little more storm drain work suggested, and this is citywide storm drains. We've talked about Balboa Island, but we have, it's a, it's a general fund expense in our, our system, the streetlights and storm drains. We don't have specific fees for, so we're using general fund for that. There's a couple needs up in Jasmine and Iris, Port Edwards. We've, we've identified some areas that need some storm drain work. And then lastly, our streetlight system, which is a blessing. We own our streetlights. Most people don't realize that. Most cities are Edison maintained and own. It's a great benefit, but we also have to maintain these systems. So the city has spent a lot of money over the years changing over to LED, which generates a lot of energy reduction for us. But Utilities has a couple areas we need to do some additional work. I think Newport Center here actually has some poles that need some replacements. So we're suggesting about $350,000. And that leaves about $350,000, again, just not even programmed yet. There's some needs out there. There's some flexibility, but we haven't really identified that yet. We're just starting to put the budget together. I'm sure there'll be more requests. So, and any one of these can change, obviously, depending what the council comes up and the community comes up with. So that's kind of the 15.5 million. And this is just a summary, and I'll stop here if there's any questions on, on that level of the $31 million of supplemental programming.
Got a quick question. How many parks do we have?
Well, I heard 65. I'm going to ask Laura if I'm correct on that.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Laura Detwiler, your Recreation and Senior Services Director, and our current count is 65.
Thank you. So if you go back one slide, oh, no, it's actually, it's in here, it's fine. 250 City of Parks Assessment. Is that exhaustive of those 65? Is that everything?
I think we can do it for all 65.
Okay, so that's $3,800 per park to be assessed by a professional who's going to look at, what did you say they look at?
They'll look at all the major facilities, irrigation systems, turf, backstops. Outside the restrooms are usually under the FFP, but they'll look at that and come up with a general assumption to keep me in good shape.
And you don't think a member of your staff could do that?
Probably not. I think you're going to be in probably the landscape architects and the, we have specialties, but not that level.
Okay. That's all mine looking. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for this. And to Mr. O'Neil's point, you know, people know when they're in Newport, when the roads, the car gets quieter, and the roads look great, and it's a big part of it. And I know each one of us, except perhaps District 7, we have what I like to call blisters in our districts, just little street ends, little things that, you know, are kind of cobbled up and aren't a great look, and to the degree that we can pick those off. And some of that has occurred around the high school with some sidewalks that were, you know, that were basically just small cliffs to the curb, and they got pulled in. So it's safer and it looks great. And we have some other areas. You mentioned the landscaping by the, by the trailer park, as you go off out of town, right at the bridge going over to Huntington Beach. And so I think that's part and parcel to building value in the community, to sort of identify the, the worst offenders. I suppose each council member has a few that they know about, and communicate that to your department, just to take a look and see what, you know, build it in at some point, trying to take care of these, these offending blisters that are, you know, that just once they start to get, go away, it just, the whole place starts to look better. It just keeps compounding, and that adds to property values and people's enjoyment of their neighborhoods. And it's just fabulous what's happened with the medians in this town in the last five, seven years. It's been just great doing that work. And I think residents really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's move on to another set. This, this, remember, we talked about the American Rescue Plan, the $10.1 million the city received. So this is one-time money, and we have a couple suggestions for the council to consider. We've made a couple commitments already to the community to build the various facilities. So what we're suggesting is taking 6.5 million of that, and that'll address the city's Central Library Lecture Hall commitment we've already made. We've had an agreement with the Library Foundation, and we're starting to build that project. But we could fund the entire commitment out of this, would be one of our suggestions. And the other one would be, we've made a commitment to the Junior Guard Foundation, the Junior Lifeguard Building of 3.6 million, which is the city's commitment for the building and the parking lot. So we'd suggest using this one-time money for these two projects to honor our commitments, if that's where your direction goes. So that's our recommendations on here, and I'll stop if there's any comments.
Do you want to raise your hands or discussion on that?
However you like to handle it, Mayor.
Is this the only item on, on your presentation that really requires sort of input?
I've got some others, but they're, they're longer term items. We could probably stop here on anything we're thinking. This will all be future, actually programmed next year if you suggest going forward with it. Some of the other ones are probably a little more discussion individually.
Let's just save it for the end, then, so we can think about it.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll do kind of a poll.
Okay. I'm going to move on then. And again, I mentioned some other facilities we want to start talking about. These are all things in our master plans, and starting to show up, and we just want to bring them to your attention and start the dialogue. So the first one is, we spent some time a while back, just kind of introducing that, but the Balboa Yacht Basin is a city-owned facility, and we need to probably start talking about it. I've got a picture here, and I'm, I'm going to note, look at the note, the way the marina's laid out, because it's interesting. We've done some work on that. But this was built back in 1950. It's kind of funny how time goes by, but you think about 70 years old. It's a big, big facility, generates a lot of revenue for the city, and probably starts needing some attention here, and it's starting to show up in our master plan. So the buildings themselves, there's a line of buildings, if you're familiar with this facility, about 18,000 square feet, built in 1950. They're wood frame buildings. And they're, they're starting to struggle. We've been maintaining them over the years, we're putting more money into them, their plumbing systems and stuff. But currently, there's three apartments, some office buildings, a restaurant, and 39 garages. Two of the apartments now are no longer rentable. They're, they're just at a point where they're, you know, because they're so old, you can't make ADA, you can't meet fire codes, or they're basically, you should just tear them down. They, they cost tens of thousands of dollars. One estimate's $50,000 to renovate one of these apartments. So they're getting to the point where it's probably not feasible to just, to take care of it. So we're not renting them, basically, is what the deal is. The, the garages are older, they're still rentable, but maybe we could format it to a better revenue model. So just starting to think about that. The reconstruction will take some time. We probably want to talk about, or maybe the Finance Committee, or maybe Accounts Committee, and how will you want to move this forward, or should you move it forward? But it is, it is a good revenue generator for the city. It does need some love coming up here. And we want to bring that to your attention. In addition to that, you note the slips there, how the configuration changed. The original slips were built in 1950. In 1985, 35 years later, they changed them and built the current configuration. Well, guess what? It's about 35 years, and we're starting to see problems with it. In fact, I've got a project Chris Miller's working on right now. We, we were going to do a lot of major maintenance on these in the term of a couple hundred thousand dollars. And I said, just wait a minute, let's talk to council, because they're coming up for replacement anyway. So we've got another program, we can do about 30,000, get them all saved, take care of the concrete breaks, and there's, there was a fire down there, take care of that issue. And then let's talk about, do we want to replace these? Because they are coming up in our harbor management plan that talks about replacement. So that discussion's coming up. Again, I point out here, there's 172 slips. We get about $6.2 million to, to replace the whole thing. They've served us for about 35 years, and they're up. And the other note that's coming up again, we look for opportunities where projects align. We've got our lower bay dredging coming up. This facility still needs dredging, and it'll probably need some level of taking care of some sediment issues in there. So maybe that marries up. Maybe the docks get replaced at the same time. So just kind of want to kind of get council's direction or thoughts on starting to move this into the budget process.
Councilman Better.
Are we going to be able to save the Galley Restaurant?
That would be, we surely would. It's a, it's a fixture. And, and do we work around it? Doesn't necessarily mean we have to, I don't, I don't know the specifics on that. You could leave it in place. You could, you know, if they want to stay and be another 100 years, we could build them a new facility right next door, and then put them in it, do a flip, and then, you know, that would all have to be worked out, depending on how you want to go forward. You have other leases on there. Dave New has the same property. You can see in the picture there is, is a lease going on there. I'm not sure the details on that. We have connections with the residential next door, you know. We have parking issues down there. We have housing needs. We, the marina itself, we've been waiting, they, they complain, they want better facilities, like Wi-Fi. Boats have different electrical draws now than it's wired down there. We should plumb it for a little higher usage, maybe change the configuration. All that will be in the discussion.
If it could be done like the Crab Cooker was, that would be nice, so that you maintain the sort of historical charm of that building. Thank you.
And how many items would you like our opinions on, Dave?
I, I think in this particular case, how you would like to handle it going forward, if you'd even like it, I think the discussion's warranted to start. If you want to start with the Finance Committee, or a small group, or just give a specific direction to bring things back, that would be great.
Well, Mayor Protem Blom might have some remarks, and the Finance Committee might make the most sense.
I think this would be a good item to bring back to Finance Committee, because I think the numbers are the more important ones, because it is a good revenue stream. But that revenue stream mainly resides in the marina itself, and kind of the leasing of those dock spaces. Sometimes, you know, we're amazing at what we do, rebuilding things. We're not the best landlords in the world, and certainly not with some of our apartments and things of that nature. And so I think maybe a broader view for kind of what we're looking at on land there. And then we almost split it apart to say, hey, let's look at the marina when we're dredging. If we can do something at that point, make it, make it two pieces, rather than consider it as one, I think would be a good place to start.
Thanks. Great. I think it'd be great at that. Councilman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, is this proposed project, is this in the Facilities Financial Plan? Has this been something that's been on the docket as we've worked for it over the years, or is this a new item?
I believe the buildings is below the line. It's not currently funded in there. We've, we've talked about it. I'm just looking, I'll give you the yacht basin. It's not been put in. It's a potential project. Again, that discussion's been out there. We know it's coming. So now we're thinking, we should start thinking about how to handle it. The slips themselves and the dredging are in the harbor plan, not the FFP, so.
Okay. All right. But we've been talking about these apartments and what to do with those wood construction, constructed buildings. So that, is that something we've been focused on, and now is the time?
Again, it's council's discretion. We've talked around this for a while. We know it's there. Whether we take it on, I don't think it, there's an immediate need. I mean, the buildings are functioning. We keep putting money into it. But we know there's, there's a lifetime. We know we could probably do a better, gain more revenue out of them, because we're starting to lose several of them just from their condition. And it'll take some time to go forward. We're not advocating for a complete construction job. It could be, you know, the, the Finance Committee could say, why don't we do a leaseback, or why don't we change the, the configuration? Let's put more housing there unless, garages, or let's put more garages. That would be something you want to determine later. We're just trying to say, I think it's time we start talking about this. Otherwise, it'll, it'll be forced upon us at some time through.
Sure. I support that. Okay. Thanks.
So we have some direction on that. We'll start putting that together and working with the various committees. Next one here, we talked a little bit about last year, and we're moving forward. We put some money in last year's budget, some exploratory money to try to lay out. This is our corporate yard fueling facility and wash racks. And again, why I bring this up is the backbone of, of how we keep the city up. You've got city facilities and staff. You have equipment that has to be, just like your fire department, your police department, the corp yard is a, is an integral part of that. And there's a fueling system in there that makes sure that our fire trucks and our, our yard equipment's available and ready to run. It's now reaching the end of its life. So we want to talk about how we do this. The, the current unleaded tanks in there are single wall. They need to be replaced. They, they expire basically in 2024. We have an existing CNG station that we put in there under an agreement with Clean Energy, and it expires in '23. We're still using it, but there's problems that have shown up. Again, fueling is really changing in California, as you know, and we're still guessing at it. We used to be all diesel gas, then we started moving to compressed natural gas. A lot of our big equipments now on compressed natural gas. And now the governor's putting dictations and orders in that we're going to go electric. So we're, we're trying to balance this on how, how are we going to do it? I mean, we're even talking about, well, maybe we just buy all, you know, new gas vehicles in '24 before the mandate comes in and see how this plays out, so we can get 10, 15 years out of recurrent systems and fleets, because electric's a whole nother thing, and it's going to change. And can we even, building is, is a big commitment for the city. So we're having those discussions now. I want to just point this out, because there's some significant revenue that we need to plug in here. I, I even think at some point, I'd probably like to work with a few council members, because we like guidance. We'd like to know where you're thinking in policies. So we have done that before. We, we have a council building group that we use. It's typically the Finance Committee that we can meet with and say, just where do you think we should look at, and then bring these forward, and have a Finance Committee discussions on them. So this would be one of those we're, we're starting to get. We have some ideas for layout. And I just kept this slide here, because again, we've got circulation issues. We've got how, how you move this around, it becomes a long-term investment. We're trying to reuse our yard. We've got this now compacting with our refuge items, because we've changed our refuge program. We're now putting green waste in. We're expanding the, the transfer station in there now to handle the green waste. We've got other people knocking on our door. Can we use your transfer station, which are agreements we haven't even started thinking about. But all this starts playing into how do we move things through our yard, and where do we put these facilities? So a lot of conversation here. Gets to where we're thinking, we're probably got some budget expenditures. I mentioned we did $44,000 already in, in the prior budget. The current budget has, I think it's 406 in it, but now that we've kind of played with the building blocks, we think it's going to take a little more to get to the design phase. So we're, we're going to suggest we do about $500, $6,000. We'll be adding a little money to get to that in, in this coming budget. And then there's a construction cost, and it looks like it's going to be around $5.8 million total to just do the fueling systems. That's, that's 6.4 million we're putting in the yard.
Would, excuse me, oh, thank you, Mayor. Would Clean Energy, would we have a different contract? Would you still want to go that route? Because they offset some of these costs.
They do. And, and that's a discussion we probably want to have with you. Right now, there's, there's pros and cons to that. They do our maintenance for them. We probably want to keep the maintenance. Should we use it solely for city purposes? We're getting to the point where we could. We have, now you think about all the trash trucks are going that way, the sweepers, the, the back trucks for utility, our other vehicles. It's quite a long lineup in the morning to try to get the things fueled, and that causes a delay on staff. It causes our delay on staff time. I'm burning money, people sitting there trying to get filled up. There's probably a case to make that we could use it more private. We have, we have a lot of interface with the public and come in and use it. That's one of the agreements with Clean Energy. The public gets to use it. And so I got a trash truck there waiting to fill up, because there's three taxis in line, you know. It may not be, it may not be the right use. Could we go to slow fill? This is a, a system where we're trying to fast fill our trucks, but what if we do like we saw out at CRNR's parish plant, and we put slow fill in the yard, and all these trash trucks, and our equipment's filled overnight? We're, we're looking at that now. It might be more cost-effective. And surely, I don't like any labor sitting there for 10, 15 minutes, just idling, trying to get fuel, so.
I've got a couple of questions on this. So the 2025 mandate from Sacramento essentially says we must have zero emission, or we must have electric?
So there's a couple of things, and I don't have 100% knowledge of that, but there, there's two. There's for the general public that says we're going to transfer over to electric cars, and they're full electric. I don't think there's a hybrid model in there, which I think is a better model. But, and then there was another item we came out of Sacramento that says municipal fleets are going to be on a faster schedule. And I think the date is 2025 for that, that we're supposed to convert our, our general purpose stuff over.
That was actually my exact question. So there is a potential mandate where CNG is required before 2035, as early as 2025?
CNG is currently required now to make our clean, yeah, we're using it because of clean air requirements. The electric requirements come in, I think, 2025 for our, our basic fleet. And then the general public, I'm guessing, I always find that 2035?
Well, and CNG is also considered fossil fuel, so.
Yeah, it's not electric, yeah.
Right. But no new vehicles. So we could carry our fleet for another 10 years. That's what he was getting at. Buy early, keep them for another 10 years.
Yeah, the bottom of this slide, you'll see is some of the, that's the executive order that Mr. Newsom signed for us, and it has all the passenger vehicles required by 2035. And then medium and heavy trucks, which I don't know if the technology's still there yet, 2045. But that's general. Municipality's going to be held to a higher standard, which I hear is 2025.
So the only zero emission product available is electric?
Or hydrogen.
Or hydrogen, okay. And so quickly buying products will be grandfathered in for some time, versus going to the very end we can, and then seeing what the cost goes down to in electric. You've done that analysis on both?
We have not got that far. That's, that's that changing variables we're really trying to figure out. And actually, it'd be a policy question, too. Should we try to keep investing in our, let's say we build another underground, I'm sorry, unleaded fueling system. And, and on that note, too, we would probably build a less expensive one, not underground anymore. You've seen the above ground tanks. We could get by with something like that, because we're using less of it, less space, but it also gives us a little more ability to shift if we have to. So maybe we do something like that, and we try to run our, our gas fleet another 10 years. Well, they're kind of sorting out how electricals work, because it's a big commitment, even putting in the transformers and all the underground and connecting all the, the systems to the cars, not alone buying the cars themselves. I, I think we're leaning that way to like, let's, let's see how this plays out. As you're well aware, politics change, we get a change in Sacramento direction. Next thing you know, we, we fully stepped thing you know, we fully stepped into electric, and that's not where it's going to go. I think there's maybe a model of hybrid that might work for us. I don't think that's currently allowed by the order, but could we get to a hybrid where we're using gasoline and electric? Maybe.
I just ask a quick question. Given the mandate state and federal, there's going to be, there is, I mean, in the current infrastructure law, there's money to do the conversion on EV stations. Is that available to local governments? I imagine so.
They're just starting to roll that out. In fact, there was a presentation, I think Councilmember O'Neill and Grace and I heard the other day. It was a, we know there's money coming for electric stations, and how that's going to be deployed hasn't been defined yet. And again, there's even a policy question in there. We were going to talk to the finance committee about how do we handle electric? For instance, a great example, when we put the chargers in, if you know, we have the current chargers at City Hall and some of our facilities, those are grant-driven, where the city purchased it and managed it. But there's a problem with that, us managing the electric equipment, we're not really, you know, that's not our top thing. What's the rate, current rate for marketing for electric? I don't know. So there's another model, which is where we think the council might want to go to the community. And Jim just had this case in Sunset Ridge Park. We are now planning the parking lot there, and what we did is we went out to the private market and bid it, and said, who gives us the best bid for putting in electric? We had three people who provide electric infrastructure. And the model coming out of there is they're going to pay us $20,000 a year to put in eight stations, and still pay us parking rates for the... So there's another private model, which tends to be more, I'm going to say the Newport model. It's more like the telecommunications. So let the private industry put in the stations and put it where the need is, and run the market base versus us trying to manage it. It's not a formal policy. We have to make that, and it's coming to us. I've talked to Grace about it, because whether we like it or not, we're going to have to make some decisions here. There's going to be grant opportunities. How do we handle this? So we probably need to start talking about that, too.
Well, you're, I think that's very smart. I mean, cities don't own gas stations. I mean, when gas stations started to be built 100 years ago. So I mean, I think to put it into the private marketplace, that makes a lot of sense. I mean...
The problem we're going to have is that grant money you talked about may come from the federal government, say, it'll be applied to cities for infrastructure. I could see Caltrans saying, we're going to build state infrastructure up and down the state. That might not be the model we want to go. We're going to say, okay, fine, we don't want that grant money. We want the private industries to come in and take over and put in the stations where they need it, whether it's in, you know, Irvine Center, or it's Marina Park, or however. So we probably need to talk a little bit more about that. We suggested maybe bringing that to the finance committee and getting some direction. All right. So we're going to move past the yard fueling. And then the last one here is one we just recently talked about. We thought it important, we bring it kind of forward, because there's more discussion on this. So this would be the Newport, Pier, McFadden Plaza area, and we're talking about the rehabilitation the council talked about on October 12th. So right now, we're beginning the RFP process. We're going to try to get a consultant on board, and we'll have a lot of community input on this. And again, I say that loudly, because a lot of people ask questions. This is not a done deal. We're going to really have to work. I think Councilmember Blom and Dixon are going to have to, you know, work with the community on this. And there's a lot of policies and things we're going to go through and figure out. We're also aggressively, because I've had some calls, not that they ever have stopped, but demolition of the restaurant. And council gave us direction to go ahead and demo the building, so we're working in that direction, too. We're trying to do it, so we're not adding any money to the system. Some of the engineers that are looking at right now are saying, yeah, we can demo the building, but you need to put some piles back in. We're like, we don't want to put piles back in. We want to just cardboard over it if we have some, you know, make it, so we can get through a couple of years. With that, and again, I point out, because there's going to be a lot of discussion, we're talking about rehabilitation of maybe the pier. The lifeguard building's coming up. We should probably downsize the lifeguard building, because it used to have a lot more fire until we built this facility. Now they're over here, so maybe there's some savings there, but the building can change. The restroom building there that we get a lot of complaints about, and it probably needs to be replaced. McFadden Plaza, how do you want to reuse that? The ocean parking lots. There's been discussion about, what about the private-public property interface? You know, should we do lease agreements, outdoor dining? We have parking needs, we have pedestrian needs, we have cyclist needs, but there's maybe some connection there, how we do that, too. All that has to kind of be talked about. So right now, what we're doing is we're going to be suggesting re-scoping the current project, which was for the oceanfront trails, basically. And by the way, I heard the comment today, there's no money or plan for an ocean trail yet from 36th over to San River. There's talk, there are suggestions in your bicycle master plan? Nothing's ever been decided on that, so that's a whole nother question for council, if you want to go there. We're developing the RFP for the consultant, and then we'll start the process. So you're going to see a request in the budget to put that, reprogram that $350,000. And I think with that, I've taken enough of your time, but happy to answer questions?
Yeah, let's first give you everything you need.
Okay.
You need direction still on the federal funding?
Yes, we'd like to, if you concur with programming that towards that.
And is there anything else? Is that the only thing you specifically need today?
The 15.5 million, I can show that list again, if you're just kind of generally in concurrence with that, because then Jim will be developing the RFP, and you'll see that March 10th, I think it is, at the early look. And we'll have it. And again, if council can change at any time, but we're just kind of getting your feel, so we can build the budget. This is the list we look for some direction on.
Okay, so any comments about the list before we just do a quick straw poll on items? Comments or questions? Do we want to, go ahead?
Just a quick note, the ARPA money, just, that's been kind of assumed that that would be the funding source, at least at the kind of finance level. So I just wanted to point out that as we're making that discussion, it could come from general fund if we wanted it to, but the basic assumption has been the ARPA funds were there, and it would help offset our side of the expenses on both those projects. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Library lecture hall.
The two projects.
Okay. Why don't we, Councilman Brenner?
I just had a question about, we talked about homelessness, and how we're going to have to spend some money or do something to get our permanent supportive housing projects going. Is there something that we need to do as far as setting aside money that would be specially designated for the homeless situation?
So for the permanent supportive housing, we've already had council direction on that, and we currently have a million of general fund appropriated, and the direction was to look at the development agreement funding as well. So we do have a couple potential upcoming sources from that, too. So I don't think we need further direction on that at this time.
So we're not going to spend any of our surplus on that?
No.
Okay. And the other question is something that Nancy Scarborough has been talking about for a long time now, is what about infrastructure needs for our arena housing that we're going to have to plan for being built?
Yeah, I think that's a very good question. I think it's a little premature at this moment. I think we're going to be having, continuing to have that conversation. If you recall, there was council direction on looking at development fees associated with projects, and we're currently have a study that's underway right now. And when we bring that back, I think that's going to be a good continuing discussion on that topic in particular.
So we're kind of delaying the discussion on those. We're not going to talk about those in terms of our surplus?
Not for the fact that we need, we'd like to have the surplus funds appropriated for this next year budget. And so I think it's just a little too soon on that appropriation for those areas. Not that they're not critical, but we need a little more information before moving forward there.
And the other issue that I am concerned about is we've had a lot of water main breaks and sewer breaks and things like that in the last couple of years. Are we allotting extra funds for that in the future? Because I'm a little worried that the rate they're failing.
And that's something also that, that, we have our utility structure here, but our water and wastewater funds...
Water, wastewater, yeah.
Yeah, we have specific funds there, and we do look at the master plans of those and see where we need to accelerate or not. In fact, there, if you remember, we went through quite some detail on, with the water rate increase, and part of that was that infrastructure piece. So we'll certainly look and update that. The sewer side is also, that's actually due for looking at sewer rate adjustments, and part of that would be looking at the infrastructure piece. So that's on our schedule right now.
All right. As long as you're looking at it, Grace, I'm good.
Thank you.
Councilman Dixon?
Thank you. Well, first of all, my opinion on these projects, I'm supportive to just move them forward to the next phase. But I do want to follow up on another Nancy Scarborough idea. She mentioned it publicly at the last meeting. For ADUs, is there something that we could create a, in the community development area, permit incentive relief fund to really accelerate the community's response and understanding of building ADUs and offset some permit fees or something, if maybe they're external funds? But just something, because the way the housing element works, if I say this correctly, it's affordable, and the more affordable units that are smaller and less impact on the community would be ADUs. And if we could kind of jumpstart that, it's something that we may want to consider. How would we do that? Or maybe Simone is here.
I actually think we have that on track to bring back to council as a discussion item. I'll let our community development directors speak to it briefly.
Good morning. Simone Juergis, Community Development Director. So we're doing a couple of things. So the council has already waived all the permit fees for the ADUs. We are working on a very robust website, standard plan, so that is being worked on now, so it'll take us time to develop. I think the question from Councilmember Dixon was a finance program or a loan program? And so we really need to understand council's direction on something like that. That's not something that we're anticipating to do, but that's something that we can put in as a, we already have policies in place, but it's really going to be council direction if you want to use some of that surplus funds for any type of loan program, or some type of bridge loan, or we just haven't explored or spent any time on that, on that subject.
I know that's complicated, and it opens up a lot of questions, but I wouldn't hope that we're looking at what other cities are doing. I'm hearing other electeds talk about exploring the same question that I've just raised. How can we incentivize homeowners to build ADUs on their property and help us solve the affordability, affordable housing problem?
So we could definitely spend time and look at other agencies to see if they are developing any loan programs. We are doing all we can on our end to incentivize. I know it's been slow, but we've been focusing on that housing element. In about six months, we'll see a lot more on the ADU side, and that'll come out. But we will spend more time on the loan program side.
Yeah, that's something Simone and I have been working on. I came up with the idea of the holiday for the permit application. I would love to add another incentive to help them make it happen physically. So that's a great idea that we could definitely incorporate, if you have time for the next proposal.
Absolutely.
Or we can talk about that meeting.
Yes, we'll put time into it.
Okay.
And Simone? When we talk about ADUs, it's much easier to incentivize new ones, where they're building, you know, on top of a garage in Newport Heights or something like that. But I would like us to look at ways that we can incentivize people to do what's necessary to make the ones that are already existing legal, so that we can count them. And I know that's a problem, but it would save us so much if those, because they're very small units, were able to be counted. It would do so much for us and for our ring numbers. So if there's anything that we can do there, that's really important.
And that's a very good point. We understand there are a lot of second units or ADUs that have never been legalized, are considered illegal units. So how do we provide that financing mechanism to legalize? Because there's a lot of building code implications, and there's a lot of cost to that. So we definitely recognize that. And that's a good point, Councilman Brenner.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I would argue that's a, that would be a better use, you can sit down. That would be a better use of retrofitting older ADUs for a program than new ones, but I would be open to either, quite frankly.
Yeah, do both.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just want to make sure I frame up, so you can answer all the questions we need.
What I'm open to do is go to the public first, and then we'll go through them, line by line, because they might have input on the projects. Okay, let's go to public comments, please. Public comments, this item, please come forward, if you have a couple of you. Feel free to go to the opposing podiums.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. Deep breath. Boy, that's easy to spend $31 million. Doesn't take much time. And I think all these projects are really very valuable, and I agree with all of them. I do thank Councilmember Brenner and Dixon and Muldoon for bringing up the idea of the ADUs. What I was talking about originally was a program that could be a loan, would be a loan from the city and repayable when the homes are either sold or transferred. And therefore, we're not really losing that money, we're just putting it into a fund that, you know, we get back later. So, and I do think that there are a lot of units in the city that are not legal. We could set up a program to identify those, to get a building inspector out to determine what needs to be done, help them, homeowners, get some idea of cost for the construction, and then set up a loan for them that would help them happen, have those happen. So I know there's a lot there. It's not something we can do today, but I appreciate the fact that we're looking forward to that. I also noticed that in the Balboa Yacht Basin, we have three apartments and 39 garages. I see that as 42 ADUs. And if you make them a two-story, you double that number. That's 800 to 1,000 units that we don't have to put in. So just a thought. Thanks.
One thing to Nancy. When you're on council, and you talk about building affordable housing units with water views...
I know. I know. I realize, I know, it's just how my mind works. I just, I heard that, and I thought, oh, gosh.
But we can do something, I'm sure.
Okay. So we sell that land, and we put them somewhere else. I don't know. I agree with that completely. And the same thing goes for the whole Mariners Mile. I mean, that's just not the place for low-income housing, but where else can we do it in the city is, it's always a problem. So, sorry.
Good evening or afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. I, too, agree with everything that Dave has proposed. I do have a question, though, about the possible sale of any city land. I don't want us to get in the same predicament that Anaheim is in. So I'm generally not a proponent of us selling land, but rather leasing it to someone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And any other speakers who want to speak, please feel free to come forward now. We're about to wrap this up.
Hi again, my name is Martin Culver, and I'm here to propose the extension of the bike path from 36th Street down to Orange Street. And it's not a glamorous thing, it's not a high priority, but it's something that's been sitting that way since the day that bike path was built. And it currently ends at 36th Street, and it dumps all the pedestrians out onto Seashore Drive for a two-mile stretch down to Orange Street, where they're riding right alongside all of the residences that live along Seashore Drive. And so, you know, no is kind of the easiest course of action to take, but sometimes yes is the most fulfilling action to take, and it's a quality of life issue. One of the small pleasures is riding your bicycle down along the beach. Newport Beach is one of the most fantastic coastal access areas. Laguna Beach is too hilly for bike riding along the coast, but Newport is flat, and so it's a perfect place to go for a beach bike ride. Just extending that bike path along there would help kind of delineate the beach encroachment issues that some of the residences have had along there. So it sort of sets the demarcation line between the private and the public, so that would be a win-win. I think it'd be a win-win for the residents that live along Seashore Drive. Any residents that live on the beach that might protest the bike path, there's an equal residence that would probably hail the bike path, because they live on Seashore and each, you know, just right across the alley, you have the exact same number of homeowners. And I just think it's, you know, it's kind of a simple thing. It's something that's easy to put on the back burner. But now with the surplus of cash, I think this is the time in history to do it, and I just ask for your consideration on the project. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. We received your pictures as well.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, please. And again, if you want to speak on this item, please come forward now.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Paul Watkins. The good news is that we can accelerate the Balboa branch and the fire station. That's, that's good news. Good news is that we stay the course on the library lecture hall. That's good news. The news not so good is to extend the bike path from 36th Street to Orange. In about 1980, former Mayor DeBay said, I've got a revolutionary idea. That revolutionary idea is to make Seashore rather than two-way, one-way, from 36th Street to Orange. As a result, we have a dedicated bike path. We have great safety along Seashore now. We didn't have that before. In about year 2000, this subject came up at council, in the old council chambers. There was a woman, single woman, attractive woman, two small children, who addressed the council at that time. And she said, you know what? I like the pristine opportunity of taking my kids to the beach, of having the opportunity to have a picnic, of the opportunity to play in a pristine setting without the bike path chaos. And that was very convincing, I think, to the council then. I hope it's convincing to the council now. This is an issue that comes up like clockwork every several years, and the council's always said, you know, there's another opportunity to have a pristine beach experience in addition to the activity from 36th Street all the way down to D Street or F Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see no other speakers on this item. I'll bring it back to you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you. I was just going to kind of frame up what I heard and make sure we know what questions we're looking for, if that's okay. What I've heard so far is, for instance, the BYB, we can send that to the finance committee and have further discussions. Electric vehicle policy, proceed and start kind of developing something. This will all come back to council, obviously. The Balboa Library, go ahead and put in a budget, I think. We'll have to decide what it looks like, if that's, that's your general course on that.